Good morning, County Council. Thank you very much for those that are in attendance, both virtual and in the chamber here this morning. I'd like to call to order this committee, the whole agenda of this committee, the whole meeting of December 13th, 2024. At this point in time, would you please join us in the singing of Oh Canada? Let us begin together by respectfully acknowledging that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of the three fires known as Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations. And further, we give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Nauwash, known collectively as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. To our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. Madam Clerk, could you please lead us in the roll call?
Counselor Mackey. Counselor McKay.
Here.
Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Counselor Pringle. Counselor McQueen.
Present.
Counselor Nielsen.
Excited to be here.
Counselor Patterson. Counselor Dickert. Counselor Kentner.
Present.
Counselor Keating. Counselor Body. Counselor Gregg. Counselor Milne.
Present.
Counselor Dobrine.
Present.
Warden Mattressopps.
Present.
Counselor Boringo.
Present.
Counselor Echols. Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
We have all members participating today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is our declaration of interest. Are there any declarations on today's agenda? Seeing no hands, we'll move on. So we're going to move on into the bulk of today's agenda, item six for direction and discussion. It is the 2025 Budget Overview and Department Presentations. So what will happen first is we will hear opening remarks from Madam CAO. Then Director Spicer will present an overview, a PowerPoint presentation of a corporate overview. And then we're going to break up the presentation of the more detailed matters. We'll break it up into Corporate Services, Planning and Community Development, then Human Services, followed by Transportation Services. Now, given the fact that so many of us are both virtual as well as those in the chamber, we'll pause intentionally along the way in each of those departments to make sure that everyone can have a chance to ask questions or make comments. We'll alternate between looking towards our virtual participants and those in the chamber. So rest assured, in each of those sections, we have already slotted in intentional pause points to be able to ask for questions. So what I'd ask then is, as the staff are making their presentations, if council members could please make your notes on what it is you'd like to ask and refer to the specific page number or the specific line number when you have a detailed question to ask about that section. And I think that we're going to start with the 2025 Budget Detail Package and then we'll move into the draft, the 10-year capital forecast after that. We are looking to, we're aiming to have a lunch break at 1:00. So we're hoping that we can get through a good portion of our agenda before lunch and then we will be continuing after that. So Madam CAO, did you want to begin with some remarks?
Thank you, Warden Mattressopps, and good morning, County Council. On behalf of all county staff, we're pleased to present the 2025 Operating Capital Budgets for your review and consideration. Developing the annual budget is a complex and iterative process that begins with updating our 10-year capital plan and identifying priority projects. From there, we align operational requirements with available funding to ensure a balanced and strategic approach. The 2025 budget reflects our commitment to investing in critical infrastructure and delivering high-quality services to our community. For the first time, we also included a preliminary operating outlook for 2026, showcasing our efforts to plan proactively. As always, our budget will continue to be refined as we received updated information such as funding confirmations or legislative changes. For 2025, we are presenting a $302.4 million budget with $78 million or 25.8% funded through the levy, down from 28% in 2024. While the net levy has increased by 3.2%, it is important to note that in Ontario, infrastructure construction costs have risen by 3.9% year over year. This year marks a significant milestone as we introduced our Budget and Finance Committee. And I would like to extend my gratitude to Chair Echols and Counselors Mackey, Nielsen, Gregg, and former Warden Milne for their thorough review and thoughtful guidance on the financial matters brought forward. We look forward to your feedback this morning and discussions as we work together to finalize a budget that addresses the needs of our residents while maintaining fiscal responsibility. Thanks.
Thank you, CAO Windgrove. At this point in time, I would like to invite Director Spicer to come to the lectern and be able to give us the overview, after which we'll see if there are any questions on the overview so that we can then go into the specific portions. Welcome, Director Spicer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. We are pleased to present this morning the 2025 Draft Budget that also provides a 2026 projected budget as Kim mentioned. When we get into the budget document, you'll notice the format resembles the previous budgets. The finance team has worked with departments to develop budgets using the software we began implementing in April of this year, while also working as we have in the past. We will present to you in the first part of 2025, a budget book using Questica. We've had some resource challenges, so for the purpose of today's meeting, we are presenting the version you are accustomed to seeing. I know that Sue will be excited to show the budget book when we have it up and running. I'd like to echo my thanks to the Budget and Finance Committee for their guidance, as well as the Long-Term Care Committee of Management and Rockwood Terrace Redevelopment Committee for their work. Thanks to the senior management team, their managers, and the finance budget team. This is truly a team effort. Budget and Finance first looked at budget assumptions and inputs provided by staff in September. These included changes in costs, inflation, supply chain pressures, market trends, funding levels, revenue sources, and economic conditions, et cetera. October 28th, the committee heard a preliminary number of less than 4% increase after growth. This was preliminary as there was still some work to be done on the budgets. November 28th, the committee reviewed the proposed budget and their direction is reflected in the budget before you today. The 2025 draft budget does not include an investment in community transit beyond what exists today. The current grant program ends March 31st, 2025. We will talk further about community transit under the Planning and Community Development portion of today's meeting. It also does not include impacts of proposed adjustments to the county road network as reviewed by the Urban Road and Road Exchange Task Force or impacts of discussions with member municipalities for planning efficiencies. The committee reviewed a number of things and included in the 2020-25 draft budget are the following items: implementation of the work that was done in the ORH review for paramedic services. It's a $410,000 impact in both '25 and '26. And as a reminder, we exercised a smoothing mechanism so that we wouldn't have spikes and decreases over the 10 years in order to add the resources and equipment and infrastructure that's needed for the implementation of the full enhancement review. It also includes, it's been a previous report, but court security costs. This is the city of Owen Sound and being a regional courthouse, we've included $250,000 in the 2025 budget and assumed in 2026 that might increase by $25,000. Asset management, the transfer to reserve in the transportation budget is an increase of $149,200 and shows approximately $250,000 increase in 2026. That number, of course, will be refined as we present to you an asset management plan in 2025 that reflects what we are, the mandatory requirements of discussing proposed levels of service. That work is currently underway and should come to you by the deadline of July 1st for the plan to be in place. Committee also received a request for Forest Festival sponsorship of $5,000. That's included in the budget. There is a homelessness response coordinator, a 0.2 FTE, that's no longer funded by our partner. That's a $21,000 impact in 2025 and then $5,600 estimated for 2026. An Ontario Works caseworker, it's 50% provincial funded. So our share of the additional position in 2025 is $55,400 and a slight increase in 2026 of $2,450. There's the addition of a business analyst. It's budgeted for a part year in 2025. The impact in 2025 is $87,600 and the remainder of $49,300 in 2026. It also includes the addition of a facilities and operations manager. That's a partial year in 2025 as well of $96,500. The full increase, the remainder would be $47,500 in 2026. We did discuss with committee that we believe that there'll be efficiencies achieved with the implementation of this position. Until we get it up and running and we can have some, let's say, stats or establish some best practices, that isn't reflected in this budget. We weren't able to identify specific lines where those efficiencies would be found yet, but that's anticipated for 2026. So the previous slide total is just over $1 million. There were two slight adjustments made at the November 28th meeting. And the amount included in the 2025 draft budget was $1,055,400. This slide shows the operating and capital requirements. So it shows that there's a net levy requirement in 2025 of $78,266,500 after new growth of over $1 million. Adjustments to tax ratios that would be made in conjunction with the city of Owen Sound. And if you recall, we've been ratcheting down the multi-res ratio to match the new multi-res ratio by a quarter of a movement per year. So currently, it's been reduced by 50% and this would be a further one-quarter reduction. And then there are the slight adjustments with the Owen Sound ratios. So after all those items, it results in an increase of $2,417,271, which is a 3.2% levy increase. 2026, we're giving you a very high-level overview. You'll notice we've showed growth out of $1 million. We wouldn't know growth until November 2025. So this is for illustration purposes only. And I will say that there are a number of items. It's difficult to predict in the 2025 budget and more so in 2026, the amount of funding we're going to get from our provincial partners. So we've had to make some assumptions on, for example, level of care funding for long-term care, case mix index, what we're going to get for social services, et cetera. And those numbers are even harder to predict in 2026. So if everything holds true, we'd be looking at a 5.1% increase at that point. The impact for 2025 on a property owner with a single home detached, not on water, that's assessed at $289,000 is an increase of $37.42. And just as a reference, for every $100,000 of residential assessment, the increase would be $12.95. We have a slide, I know it's hard to read on the screen, just showing us out of that $302.4 million, where all the money is spent. So you can see that transportation services is 22%, paramedic services is 10%, corporate services is 7%. The big one is long-term care of 33%. So we're spending almost $100 million, but that 51.2% of that includes Rockwood Terrace redevelopment. So that is a significant amount of our gross expenses. This slide, just for your interest, is the expenses by department. Now talk a bit about reserves. So we have discretionary reserves. So that's money that we've set aside and you have the ability to make decisions on adjusting how you're using that money. The big thing I'd like to flag is, at the end of 2023, we had just shy of $69 million in those reserves. And at the end of 2025, we're projecting that those reserves will have a balance of $36.2 million. A chunk of that is, of course, the money that we're using for Rockwood Terrace redevelopment that we had sitting in our own reserves as we'd been planning for the redevelopment. This slide again just demonstrates that change. You can see, obviously, the bulk of it is in the capital purpose. Obligatory reserves are ones that we don't have discretion over. They have to be segregated. And those two reserves are for development charges and CCBF, formerly known as gas tax. We have the ability to determine what projects we use them for, but it's not that we can take that money and use it for a purpose other than what it was provided for. So you can see as well that at the end of 2023, we had just under $34 million. At the end of this year, we're projecting just over $27 million will remain and we would be down to below $19 million in 2025. This slide just shows that change from 2023 to 2025 of $15 million. Well, before we move into the actual budget, I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Spicer. So first, I'm just going to look around the chamber here to look for any hands that are in person. And then if, yes, we can look for the gallery view, we'll look for any question. As we said, we will go through section by section, but any overall questions with regards to the slide content. And I'm not seeing any hands virtually. Oh, I see one hand in person, Counselor Echols. Oh.
There we go. Mary Lou, you put it to question, $289,000 not on water. Is there any reason individuals that are on water, that's a payment outside taxes? Is there a variance to those municipalities then that are on a municipal system?
Through you, Madam Warden. The reference isn't to on a municipal water system. It's whether your property is located on a lake on Georgian Bay, for example. So that's the typical reference that's used when you're looking at an increase. As we refer to a residential property that is not on a lake of Georgian Bay, et cetera. That's just the standard, not anything to do with a water system.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands go up virtually as well as in the chamber. So I think we're ready to proceed into the first section, which will be the Corporate Services. And if you want to look into your package, the title page begins on page 46. After an introduction, Director Spicer will then pause and then we will pause after the General Administration and General Government. That'll be our first opportunity to collect questions and comments. Director Spicer, go ahead. That's a big file, so it's just coming up.
Thank you, Madam Warden, for your patience. We're beginning with Corporate Services. So the 2025 budget for the Corporate Services function requires an operating and capital levy requirement of $14,344,200 compared to $12,926,900 in 2024, which is an increase of $1,417,300. Within the Corporate Services budget, we have council. The council budget is a requirement of $949,900, an increase of $43,600. As with non-union, the council compensation has cost-of-living adjustment of 2.5% and reflects budgeted funds for the number of meetings per diems. It also includes a number of memberships. It increased by $5,300 based on the rates we've been provided. So we have memberships for FCM, OGRA, AMO, Western Ontario Wardens Caucus in Great Lakes, and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. We've increased the council conference budget by $7,000, anticipating to return to two conferences per year in 2025. The computer support maintenance budget has increased by $4,600. You'll see this in all budgets. This is the amount that's allocated out for Dayforce software, which is used by HR. That's the new software where we're managing our payroll. And that's allocated out to each department. The allocation for professional consulting fees was reduced by $7,000 based on actuals in this budget line for the past six years. And it shows funds for the Wardens banquet and luncheon. Under Administration, Administration includes the budgets for the CAO, the Deputy CAO, Clerks, Emergency Management, Finance, HR, IT, Legal, and Communications. We've split out climate change from Administration. 2025 represents the first year that that's being reported independently. We've done this as there's a number of, I'd say, significant capital projects. And when you look at Corporate Services as a whole, it's easier if they're shown separately because then you can see without asking which one of the departments it resides in. So the 2025 admin budget is $8.9 million compared to just over $8 million in 2024, an increase of $924,800. And as a reminder, this will include the portion of the year the business analyst is implemented in the IT department and the facilities manager that's within the CAO's budget. Clerks Department has $8,900 for software to support FOI request management, $6,000 for rec and management consultant. I've spoke to IT. Under General Admin and General Government, we've budgeted just over $2.7 million for investment income. So our cash and investment management policy, the net revenue budgeted from investments that exceeds 1% of the county's own-purpose levy is placed in the one-time funding reserve and that's used to assist with non-recurring expenses and unexpected costs. So the transfer to reserve in the 2025 budget is $240,600. For capital, we've got, oh, sorry, I'm going to pause now.
Excellent, thank you. I think that's the best way for us to stay in coordination with the comments and questions. So at this point in time, this is the first pause in the Corporate Services. I'll look around the chamber here for any hands. Okay, we'll begin with Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good morning, everyone. Mary Lou, I'm just wondering for curiosity, I'm back on page 47. Is there no fee to belong to Roma?
Through you, Madam Warden, I'm going to get Sue to check. She'll look it up and we'll come back for that one. Thank you.
Okay, and we're going to go to Counselor Gregg and then I'll look to the virtual hands up. Counselor Gregg?
Thank you, Warden. And through you, just one quick question. As per the direction yesterday at Committee of the Whole regarding committee appointments, is there a sufficient room or allowance in the governance budget line to account for what could be $5,000 to $7,000 approximately in the extra committee roles or appointments that council will consider in January?
I'd say that we likely can find that money. So today, for example, you're not paying mileage for certain meetings. It all depends whether every councillor attends two conferences, et cetera. The what the mileage is, what the hotel costs are. So I would anticipate we should be able to find that money.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to Counselor McKay online.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through you, did we decide to go back to two conferences in 2025? I know. Didn't we decide just what did we just go to one in twenty-four and then we're going to go back to two? I can't remember that.
Through you, Madam Warden. Counselor McKay, as part of the 2024 budget and looking for savings opportunities in order to reduce the levy requirement, council made the decision to reduce their conferences to one. Staff put it back to two because we hadn't heard any anything otherwise, and we looked at that as that was a one-year measure only and look to you for your guidance.
Okay, thank you, and I'm not seeing any further hands on the screen nor in the chamber. So I think we're ready to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Now we'll move into capital. That's on page forty-eight of your package. So the corporate services admin capital requires a net levy requirement of two hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, an increase of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred as compared to 2024. There's twenty thousand dollars in a transfer to reserve from levy for a future update to the electronic records management system. HR has some projects that will be completed in 2025 and funded from reserve. So fifty-six thousand, six hundred for the remainder of the up implementation for Dayforce, which I mentioned earlier. Twenty thousand dollars to continue corporate-wide lean training. That's a carryover from 2024. Twenty-five thousand to do an employee engagement survey. That's a carryover from 2024. It's partially underway. Twelve thousand dollars for the purchase and implementation of safety data sheet database, and that's a rollover from 2024. And I will mention that due to, let's say, we're speaking on Jen's behalf, the resource constraints and Dayforce taking a bit longer to implement. That's why those projects carried over from 2024. They just didn't have the capacity. Funds are being transferred to reserve for future projects. Forty thousand dollars for the replacement of corporate scheduling software. Twenty-five thousand for non-union market salary reviews. Sixteen thousand for replacement of the HRIS software. Fifteen thousand for updates to job demand and hazard analysis. Fifteen thousand transferred reserve for future update to countywide noise survey. Eight thousand for workplace violence and risk assessment updates. Seven thousand for employee engagement surveys and fifteen hundred for implementation of safety data sheets. You'll see that there's some repetitive language with the projects that are listed above. This is transfers to reserve so that we don't need to find the full amount of the project cost in the year that we're going to do it. We're setting aside money because we know that these things have a life cycle and they have to be done on a scheduled basis. A lot of this, it holds true also for IT. So IT has some projects in 2025 funded from reserve. So there's sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred for copier replacements. Thirty-four four for battery backups. Twenty-five thousand for hardware service server hardware, and that's a lifecycle replacement and sixteen thousand for long-term care hardware, hardware lifecycle maintenance. And then there's a number of funds being set aside for future projects. Twenty-five, twenty-six five for the tower replacement, and that's funded from user fees from those who run our towers. Twenty-eight thousand for wireless access points. Twenty thousand to replace photocopiers. Fifteen thousand for IT security audits. Ten thousand contribution to the IT strat plan update. Ninety-five hundred for website updates. Five thousand for phone system upgrades. Eighteen hundred for long-term care server air conditioning units. Under communications, there is an eighty-three hundred dollar transfer reserve for future communication initiatives, including the equipment in this room. And seventy-five hundred as a transfer to reserve for a future update to the corporate communication strategy. Now I'll pause for questions.
Thank you, Director Spicer. So just before we carry on, then we'll look, I'm going to look first to the virtual participants. I'm not seeing any virtual hands come up at this point in time, so I'll look around the chamber. And I do see a question from Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden. Question, Mary Lou, does the county own or lease the photocopiers?
Through you, Madam Warden, they're owned.
And not seeing any further hands in the chamber or online, we're ready to continue with climate change.
As I mentioned earlier, the twenty-five budget represents the first year we're showing climate change separate from administration. And it's to better, also better highlight the county's commitment to going green and gray. The climate change budget for 2025 for operating a capital has a levy requirement of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, which is an increase of one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred. On the operating side of that amount, the increase is seventy-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. The operating budget includes the cost to implement the Climate Change Action Plan and also includes a grant-funded position from Natural Resources Canada, which is referred to as ENRCAN, to create a green development standard, and that's a partnership with Dufferin and Wellington Counties with Gray as the lead. In the capital budget, it requires a levy requirement of eighty-one thousand dollars, which is an increase of forty-three thousand dollars. And it's reinstating from levy funds for future climate action plans as outlined in the ten-year capital plan. Contributions to the reserve were removed from the 2024 budget. The initiatives impacting the levy in 2025 is there's twenty-three thousand dollars to support sustainable agriculture to continue with the Experimental Acres Program, and that's in partnership with Gray Ag and funded from levy. Forty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars for Climate Opportunities Fund. Thirty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars is from reserve and fifteen thousand from levy, which ensures that we're positioned to have matching funds for federal and provincial climate action programs. And there's forty-three thousand dollars for the Climate Change Action Plan. Projects funded for reserve, there's fifty thousand for the Climate Change Adaptation Plan that's rolled over from 2024 and forty-nine thousand for a corporate climate action plan. There's other initiatives that don't have a levy impact. It's just shy of one hundred and ninety-four thousand for green development standards. That's funded by one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred from grant. Other municipalities of forty-two thousand, eight hundred. There's ten thousand for reserves and development charges of eleven thousand, four hundred. And I'll pause there for questions.
Okay, so I'll look around the chamber first. I don't see any hands up at the moment, and I have not seen any hands up with virtual. We'll go over to Counselor Dickert.
Thank you, Warden. I just wondered if you can give me some idea, what is some of the items that might be involved or included in that forty-three thousand or sorry, the forty-nine thousand for the Corporate Climate Action Plan?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Warden, we'll have the manager of climate change speak to the question.
Thank you. Through the chair, the corporate climate action is really about identifying initially energy efficiency opportunities in our buildings or in our fleets. So this year, we participated in the IESO Strategic Energy Management Program. I'm going to have already realized significant savings in a number of our buildings. It also supports investments we need to make to achieve incentives for energy efficiency. So we've achieved forty-one thousand dollars in incentives already for building retrofits. So corporate climate action is really around improving the operations and where necessary, investing capital to improve the overall energy, reduce the energy use of our buildings.
Thank you. We do have another question, so you might not want to go too far. Counselor Echols.
How, how closely does the Climate Action Plan and the capital upgrades, whether it be windows, fleet adaptations and whatnot, go in connection with our asset management plan?
Through the chair, we work very closely with our asset management team. So really, we're not looking to replace anything prior to the end of its useful life. If something still is operating, we're going to look to operate it as efficiently as possible. But then planning ahead, looking at the time of replacement to ensure that we're using the best current technology to, to reduce our future operating costs as well.
Okay, and see no further hands online or in the chamber. I think we're, oh, sorry. Oh, there it is. Counselor Nielsen.
Sorry, thank you, Warden. Just a follow-up question from that line of comments then. So the forty-nine thousand, seven hundred that's in place in the budget for the reserves isn't for a new plan, but it's for enhancements to move us towards more energy efficiency. So is that in terms of how to understand that forty-nine thousand, seven hundred is additional to the asset management of those items that are hitting end of life and we're making the improvements for the energy efficiency purposes? Just trying to follow that line of comments.
Through the chair, thank you for the question. So sometimes, of course, the existing asset management practices, and I, you know, I don't want to speak for our asset managers, but you know, they're always looking for, you know, making sure we're replacing our equipment or upgrading our buildings in the best way possible. Sometimes there's innovations in the climate space where it's useful to have additional funding either to support studies. So some of the work is perhaps saying, okay, what are the options we have in this space? Can we be looking at a new technology? So that forty-nine seven is not likely to be actual capital purchases, but rather supporting the study or the research needed. But it's not about a plan, it's really about those individual decisions.
Okay, thank you. And with no further hands, I think we can proceed on to the next section. Thank you very much. So we're at WSIB.
Hi, name, Madam Warden. I'll circle back to Counselor Dobree's question on Roma. There is no specific cost for Roma. It's embedded in the AMO costs. No.
Sorry, there's just a clarification. It came from Counselor Keveney, and that would also pertain to our OSUM involvement as well, correct?
That's correct. My apologies, I had the wrong counselor. We'll begin with WSIB and weekly indemnity. So these are self-insured plans. We are a Schedule II employer with WSIB. So what we do is we charge ourselves what we believe is the, the appropriate WSIB rate in order to fund the cost of claims and the administration fee that WSIB charges to manage claims. So we did not adjust the premium rate from twenty twenty-five for twenty twenty-five from twenty twenty-four. Weekly indemnity is a self-insured short-term disability plan for unionized staff and long-term care. We have a disability management company that adjudicates claims and ensures that the absence of part-time employees is medically supported. Premiums are charged to long-term care for full-time employees. It's shown as a revenue in the weekly indemnity budget, and it's used to cover the cost of management company as well as short-term disability payments. The budgeted premium is an increase of ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars. This reflects an increase in the number of claims and the number, sorry, the number of staff and the number of potential claims as a result of having more staff. So that premium rate is approximately twenty-one point five three more than the rate used for twenty twenty-four. Information Services, or as we call it internally, the IS budget. This is the budget that is the cost of keeping the network up and running. It's Microsoft licensing and provides virus protection, et cetera. Provides training to keep the county's IT staff's knowledge current. And it's charged out to departments based on the number of users in each department. So overall, the IS budget charge it to departments is increasing by one hundred and three thousand, one hundred dollars. And that's attributed to increased computer software costs, including licensing for Microsoft, servers, Adobe and/or access controls. New in 2025 is the addition of twelve thousand dollars in that number for cybersecurity vulnerable management software. The assessment budget. This budget is one million, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred dollars, an increase of forty-eight thousand, four hundred over 2024. And that's what is paid to M-PAC on a quarterly basis. So we, we split the amount four times a year, and it's paid on behalf of all the member municipalities. So the cost for M-PAC is paid at the upper tier and not shared with the lower tiers. For court security, council saw a report on in July where we were, we discussed providing an amount to the city of Own Sound that would fund them with the difference between the city's net costs, net court security and prisoner transfer costs and the provincial budget. So that would begin in January first, twenty twenty-five, and we've estimated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the 2025 budget. Provincial offenses. The budget continues to be a revenue source to the county and includes a departmental operating requirement, so it's a reduction of the levy of ninety-one thousand, six hundred compared to a reduction in the levy of one hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty twenty-four. So we're seeing an estimate of a reduction in the revenue of forty-nine thousand, five hundred. So we operate court on behalf of Granbur's counties, and the net revenue is shared based on population. So we receive a higher share of the revenue because the population grade is higher. We've estimated that ticket revenue will increase by a hundred thousand dollars in 2025 to two million dollars, closer to pre-COVID nineteen levels. Provincial offenses workload doesn't adjust based on the revenue. We've actually had changes in provincial requirements for court operations that downloaded administration functions to staff away from the justice apiece, and the court continues to work through the COVID backlog. As a commentary, revenue is very difficult to predict. We look at historical and recent trends and work with the manager of provincial offenses to determine appropriate budget amount. We move into the county property budget.
If we could just pause there just for some questions, just because that's a good grouping to look to. I'll look to our virtual, and I'll begin with Counselor McLean.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. And just going back to software costs, there was a report that came out of the city of Toronto where software costs, Microsoft and all the different, I guess, costs related to their rights and services they provide. But it sort of said in that report that the city of Toronto was just buying new software licensing versus sort of re-reviewing or reusing what they had already had. So I don't know maybe if you had, through your matter, more had seen that report, but I know that there was something in, and the city of Toronto has a greater budget than certainly the county of Gray. But I just wanted to thought of something that has popped up with regards, and if anybody's aware of that report that was from the city of Toronto. Thank you.
Director Spicer, I'm just going to go to Madam CAO first and then see if you, there's anything you'd like to add.
Thanks for the question, Counselor McQueen. And Jonah McHeckren's on the line as well and can probably speak to more detail. My understanding of the situation that Toronto found themselves in was that they knew they needed to migrate to a new software standard. They did a bulk buy on licensing. But you can imagine the vast number of employees and associated organizations and agencies from the city of Toronto. I think it was fair to say that their staffing lists were probably not as, as tight or as up to date as, as anything that we would expect to have here, just given the complexity of the organization. And that meant that they spent perhaps funds that they didn't need to spend as, as they were licensing things that were not absolutely perhaps funds that they didn't need to spend as as they were licensing things that were not absolutely necessary. But Jody, is there more to that? I think we have a pretty good process between IT and HR here to ensure that we're on top of who's here and who needs a license, but you might want to speak to that.
Sure. And through you, Madam Warden, some of the controls we've put in place in IT to deal with that situation. About once a month, we're doing an audit on the user lists we have between HR and accounts that are still active in IT. And we tend to not have the same problem where we have unused accounts. It's just the process. If an employee leaves, we do have to keep the account open for a little while so their manager can deal with emails and all their files. And so about once a month, we're going back over those lists, closing down accounts, freeing up the licenses, making sure that, you know, any account that should have been shut down is closed and the licenses are freed up. And then we know when we have new licenses, if we need to assign to a new staff member or something that we're, that those are available as opposed to buying new. And so even on that scale, it's a much smaller issue for for us to deal with. You know, you might have a scenario where you are moving to a new product and you have some of the old licensing still available where you have to to transition and that's inevitable, but that's on a project by project basis. We do something similar for, you know, we're talking Microsoft license, but if it was Adobe licensing or something like that. When we, when we license everything through the Gray County sign in, when we shut down those accounts, we're freeing up the licenses as well. So similar process just for auditing other software.
Well, thank you for that explanation. I had to ask the question because I didn't, I had no idea how or what that was all about. So I thought, sounds like we got a good handle on it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next we'll go to Counselor Dobree.
Good morning, Warden and County Council. Thank you. My question through you is with regard to the cybersecurity vulnerability management software. I remember presentations by insurance companies that, you know, if you implement some cybersecurity prevention mechanisms, it helps with our insurance premiums. And I I'm asking, my question is, is will this software check off any of the boxes that our insurance company would be looking for that we are doing preventative measures? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dobree, and through you, Mr. Warden, Madam Warden. We have a fairly extensive checklist in place for cybersecurity insurance when it renews on an annual basis of the things they're looking for. It's never been clear for the things we're compliant on or the things we've missed, whether that actually changes premiums. I mean, we've heard anecdotally that other municipalities who don't have a lot of those controls in place are denied insurance. But I personally haven't seen any, any case where the premium is changing. I don't know if, if Mary Lou can can speak to her experience. I, we, I do hope to bring back a report of where we are with cybersecurity. We have implemented a lot of controls and we follow one of the major frameworks that is in place for for guiding cybersecurity programs in corporations and organizations. And the vulnerability management is something that our cybersecurity insurers ask whether or not we're doing it. So it will certainly help. Again, it's it's meant to identify places where we could be at risk and give us the opportunity to to shut those down, especially when you have a fairly complex network with, you know, a lot of applications, a lot of configurations. It really just helps us find those areas where we need to change some configuration to to shut down a possible security risk.
Thank you. Follow up on one more question, Madam Warden?
Yes, Counselor Dobree.
Thank you. My other question through you is with regard to the court security. And while I fully support the decision to help top up that funding for Owen Sound in the court security and prisoner transport. Could someone refresh my memory on how the provincial granting is calculated as this directly speaks to yet another shortfall from the province in funding things that they have, you know, put onto our municipalities? Thank you.
Thank you. And while I won't be able to give a perfect answer to this because this is a bit of a new territory for us. I think our understanding here at county is that the province has been steadfast in maintaining the budget for court security that is shared across the province at a fixed amount. So as those costs change amongst all of the municipalities that are hosting a court, the amount that the province is providing shrinks in comparison to what the requirement is. So that the gap that places like Owen Sound or Waukertan or any of the other provincial courts they're seeing has just continued to increase because the province's contribution is fixed. And I would look to Owen Sound if I've misspoken at all there. Thanks.
I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay, and I don't see any further hands here on the screen. And I do see a hand here in the chamber, Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden, with Microsoft. And through you to Mary Lou. Can you drill down into the WSIB a little bit more for us? The justification for the twenty one and a half percent is one of them is an increased level of staff. I maybe missed something, but I'm not sure we increased the staffing and long term care very much over the last year. So I'm a little puzzled by that one. Premiums certainly may have went up and claims may have went up, but the increase in staff, I wasn't aware that we'd really increased staff. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you. And through you, Madam Warden. We have increased direct care staffing hours. So there has been an increase across the three long term care homes. I can get you the exact numbers, but we're at three point five two hours of direct care compared to three point four before that and three ish the year before that. So that will have had a marked increase in the number of hours. So some are new hires completely and some are additional hours enhancing part time lines, et cetera. But it will be an increase in staffing hours in long term care.
Okay, and Dr. Moreau, did you want to add something?
Through you, Madam Warden, it also applies to our paramedic group, the WSIB. And the addition is as well for enhances to paramedics and also for costs that are associated with the types of trauma claims that we have with the paramedic group.
Okay, thank you. So. Okay, and Director Spicer?
Thank you, Madam Warden. So just to be clear, there's two items under there. WSIB covers all employees and the weekly indemnity, which is the short term disability. That's long term care specific. And so that's the portion that the premium was about twenty one point five three higher. We did not change the premium rates for WSIB, although the more staff we have, then the premium increases. Next, we're on page fifty one and the county property budget. So the administration budget and what we refer to as the Morrison Building, which is the the building directly to the south of us that is rented to Canadian Mental Health Association. So the two budgets here, they require an operating capital levy requirement of a million sixty four thousand two hundred dollars. It's an increase of fifteen thousand six hundred dollars over twenty twenty four. So these budgets cost include the cost of operating and maintaining the two buildings. And the eighty one hundred dollars in the administration building is primarily due to the increased cost of maintaining the building. The capital budget has an increase of seventy five hundred dollars. Most of items are funded from reserve. So you'll see there's sixty thousand dollars for six vehicle chargers here at the building funded by grant and the capital projects reserve. This is carried over from the twenty twenty four budget as we did not receive a grant. Forty two thousand two hundred for lighting replacements at the Morrison Building. It's funded from reserve. Forty two thousand for carrier control system upgrades for this building funded from reserve. Thirty seven thousand six hundred dollars replacement of carpet and flooring at the Morrison Building. Eighty five hundred dollars for lighting and security cameras that'll be in the EV parking area funded from reserve. Forty nine thousand dollars is a transfer to reserve for future capital replacement for building components. And that's an increase of seventy five hundred dollars over twenty twenty four. And this budget includes a seven hundred and six thousand five hundred dollar in funding for the self financed adventure when we expanded and renovated this building. The adventure for this building was just over seven point two million. We charge ourselves an annual interest rate of two point eight percent. That was the rate when we did the self financing adventure and it'll be fully repaid in twenty thirty one. Under taxation and grants. So this budget provides a net levy reduction of just over one point one million dollars, which is an increase of fifty seven thousand three hundred as compared to twenty twenty four. That's a result in an estimate, increase in the estimate in supplementary taxes and a change in the amount of write offs. So we've estimated write offs based on twenty twenty four year projections and analysis of twenty seventeen to twenty twenty three. And the supplementary taxation has been calculated for twenty twenty five based on M-PAC's new assessment forecast report. The health unit, our share of their budget requirement, we've estimated as one million seven hundred eighty five thousand seven hundred dollars, an increase of seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. We've offset the cost in order to come to that seventeen thousand eight hundred dollar increase by using sixty seven thousand three hundred dollars transfer from safe restart funding, which funds a portion of the contribution. Under healthcare initiatives, the twenty twenty five budget includes a two thousand nine thousand five hundred dollar contribution to reserve. That's as a result of a staff report. It's unchanged in the twenty twenty four budget. We have a five year, one million dollar Bright Shores commitment that was supported by council in twenty twenty three. So we are withdrawing two hundred thousand from that reserve for the two hundred, for the contribution that is to be made in twenty twenty five. That takes us to the end of.
Sorry, thank you. So that is the end of our corporate services. So now if there are any questions further in the sections in the page numbers that are contained in this, this is an opportunity for final questions here before we move on with page seventy eight and the beginning of planning and community development. So I'm looking here in the chamber and we'll start with Counselor Eccles.
Thank you. And through you, Warden, to Mary Lou. EV chargers weren't put in in twenty twenty four because we didn't receive a grant. Have we been approved for any grant funding in that for twenty twenty five? Or is that dependent still on grants being reserved, received?
Through you, Madam Warden. No, we have not received grants yet. So we're budgeting on the assumption that we will receive a grant.
Okay, and I'm looking on the screen. I'm not seeing any hands up from our virtual attendees. Looking around the chamber, not seeing any further hands. Looks like we are ready to proceed with planning and community services.
Through you, Madam Warden. I'll introduce the section and then I'm going to turn it over to Scott Taylor to speak to planning agriculture and trails. So the twenty twenty five budget for planning community development, which includes those items as well as economic development, tourism, grassroots and gray transit, includes a net levy requirement total of operating capital of five million two hundred forty two thousand five hundred dollars compared to four million eight hundred sixty nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars in twenty twenty four. And that is an increase of three hundred and seventy two dollars and eight hundred, three hundred and seventy two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
So good morning, Madam Warden and members of County Council. I'd like to think this is the moment we've all been waiting for, but maybe it's just the moment I've been waiting for. Just before I get to started, I'd like to extend a huge thank you to Mary Lou, Sue and Amanda from our finance department, as well as Kim and Randy from from our CO's department. They played a huge role in helping assemble this this planning budget and big kudos to 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 all of them. So in many regards, this this planning budget between planning trails and forestry and agricultural is generally a status quo adjust, a status quo budget with some minor adjustments. Sorry. There's no major staffing changes proposed, no role changes, as was introduced in Mary Lou's presentation at the beginning. This budget does not factor in any of the centralized planning services discussions. So if those discussions go further, then then there would be separate budgetary impacts associated with that. More specifically, with respect to the planning budget itself, we're looking at a total operating and capital costs of one million two hundred and thirteen thousand. This is an increase of a hundred and four thousand six hundred and eighty over the twenty twenty four budget. With respect to what that increase comprises, most of it, two thirds of it, is salaries, wages, benefits. And that's based on the non-union comp review from last year and and the the increases in that regard. We've got a slight increase in our training budget. We're going to forty six hundred from twenty five hundred. And this is in an effort to make sure our staff are well trained and and that Gray remains an attractive place to work and grow your skill sets in that regard. We do also have a five thousand dollar increase in on, in our legal services budget. And this is primarily to deal with the Ontario Land Tribunal matters that are currently before us. There's also a small increase in our travel and expenses budget going from seven thousand to eleven thousand. This is largely due to the the increase in the the way we calculate our mileage now through the CRA mileage rates, as well as increased use of our planning colleges who are visiting sites across the county in that regard. With respect to revenue on the planning side, applications can vary from year to year. Certainly with respect to twenty twenty four, our local applications were slightly lower, but our subdivision applications are slightly higher. So we do our best to predict that, but that I would note that that is variable. With respect to the, some of the capital projects and planning, the main project for for twenty twenty five is our growth management update. We've flagged this to committee and council in in various reports. And there was the the pre approval report to issue the RFP at the last budget and finance committee. And and that's for a total of sixty thousand dollars. Sorry. With respect to some other projects, we've got the continuation of the archaeological management plan. This plan has been largely done in twenty twenty four, but we're not quite through it yet. So thirty five thousand dollars that we had budgeted in twenty twenty four is being carried over to twenty twenty five. And with respect to some of the other capital projects, we're looking at contributions to to our OP reserves for the future official plan update. We're looking at contributions to the plotter for its future replacement, as well as the development charges background study, which is our major project for twenty twenty six. We're also looking at a slight reduction in the age friendly community strategy budget from ten thousand to five thousand in the capital. And we're going status quo with respect to the Housing Act, Housing Action Plan implementation funding at thirty thousand dollars in that regard. So very high level, that's what we're looking at in terms of the planning budget. I'm not sure, Madam Warden, if it's appropriate to pause here before we move on to agriculture, forestry and trails, or would you like me to continue?
If you could please continue to the end of trails and then we'll pause before we bring on Savannah Myers. I I will note, although we are away from lunch, we are looking at a mid morning break. So you're in front of the break.
Suddenly I feel more comfortable now. Thank you, Adam Warden. So with respect to the the agricultural budget, this starts on on page ninety six of of our budget package, the the smaller package. I would note the agricultural budget simply by its name is a bit of a misnomer because there's a few different things covered in here. One of the main pieces covered in agricultural budget is the the enforcement of the county's forest management bylaw. So as as council will know, those services are contracted out to Gray Sobble Conservation Authority staff. But a lot of the the agriculture budget is that bylaw enforcement. Also, within within our agriculture budget, we have our Beaver and Coyote Grant Programs. Committee may recall, or, sorry, council may recall the correspondence we had in October from a trapper. We have tentatively increased each of these line items from ten thousand dollars to fifteen We have tentatively increased each of these line items from ten thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars each to potentially cover either an increase in the number of claims and/or a slight increase in the bounties paid per claim. We are looking at bringing a staff report to the January ninth committee of the whole on this topic. But for now, the budget is five thousand dollars increase for each of those. And this line or this section of the budget also includes our payment to Gray Agricultural Services and our forage club in this regard, and the forage club in this regard. So in total, this budget is ten thousand more, approximately ten thousand more, and that's almost entirely due to the potential for the increased beaver and coyote costs in that regard. So that's agriculture, and there's no capital in our agricultural budget. Next, we have our forestry and trails budget, which starts on page ninety-seven of the package there. The forestry and trails budget is looking at a total increase of sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. The main story of the budget is we're going to try to prioritize in twenty twenty-five protecting and maintaining what we have rather than building a new. So in previous years, we've come to council with capital projects related to parking lot construction for both some of our county forests and our CP rail trail in that regard. We're not proposing any parking lot construction for the next couple of years, and we're focusing on maintenance of the trails, both the trails in the forest and continued maintenance of our investment in the CP rail trail. We're also looking at increased spraying costs for noxious weeds along the CP rail trail. We're looking at about a three-thousand-dollar cost for grading there, as well as our plowing costs continue to increase. So as per the direction from County Council last budget cycle in twenty twenty-four, we will continue to plow the Colapore Lot, but the county will no longer plow the Markdale Lot. And our newly constructed Rockford Lot isn't going to be plowed in the winter either. With respect to the overall maintenance piece, this is looking at a forty-thousand-dollar increase over what we had in the twenty twenty-four budget. So this is offset partially by the fact that we're not proceeding with certain capital projects. But it's not an even trade because in some cases, those capital projects were being funded in part by development charges. But these maintenance costs can't be funded from development charges in that regard. With respect to some of the other changes in this budget, we are continuing forward with the annual buckthorn work that Gray Sobal has been doing in our county forests. The past couple of years, that buckthorn has come from one-time funding. We do see this as a long-term project, so in order to phase this in, we are proposing in this budget that half of that value come from the levy now and half continue to be funded through one-time reserves. We have a slight decrease in revenue based on the fact that the county has now sold the Midwest co-op land, the co-op lands in Dundalk. So there's a four-thousand-dollar decrease. And then our forest harvest revenue varies from year to year, but I'm pleased to say that in twenty twenty-five, that revenue is projected to be eleven thousand greater than what it was in twenty twenty-four. We're seeing a slight increase in capital with respect to our bridge and maintenance, our bridge and culvert maintenance, which our wonderful bridge crew through Dred Station Services maintains for us. And then we've got our regular twenty-five thousand dollars for the rail trail survey project. As was noted at the beginning of the presentation by Mary Lou, this draft budget also includes the five thousand dollars for the Forest Festival. This was something we had funded regularly pre-COVID. There were some pauses during the pandemic, and then last year, as part of the budget discussions, we did take this out of the budget. So for now, that's five thousand dollars contribution to the Forest Festival is in there. Yeah, I think that's generally it in terms of the forestry and trails and agriculture and planning budgets, but certainly we'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you very much, and we will look to, we'll begin with online. We'll go to Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Metrusov. Just wondering if planning can refresh my memory. When was the last time our planning fees were updated or recalculated?
Through you, Madam Warden. It was February eighth, two thousand twenty-four. So we updated the fees and services bylaw at that time to add in some new charges, to update some existing charges and to better reflect the costs of the, at that time, newly hired planning ecology staff.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Deputy Warden Milne.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Scott, recognizing that timber prices cycle up and down over the years, can you just give a broad overview of where are we at in that cycle? Are timber prices up, down? Where are we at? Please.
Through you, Madam Warden. I'm definitely not the most well-versed in this. I will say, as I said, we did have a slightly increased expected revenue in this regard. In twenty twenty-five, we were eleven thousand over twenty twenty-four. But with respect to where we might be in that longer-term cycle, I'd probably have to consult with Gray Sobal staff in that regard and/or purchasing staff and get back to Counselor Milne because, yeah, that's not an area of my expertise in this regard, sorry.
Excellent. No worries. Thank you.
Okay, and next we'll go to Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden Metrusov, and through you, Scott. In regards to the bounty for the beavers and coyotes, in previous reports, I think we had numbers from Bruce County. Will the amount set aside, the budget increase set aside, would that get us to a point to be able to match what our friends in Bruce County are doing, Scott?
Through you, Madam Warden. I don't want to give too many spoilers for this January ninth report. But what we have done is we've surveyed twelve or fifteen other upper and municipal tier governments in that regard in terms of what they do for both beaver and coyote bounties. It is a real mixed bag across the province. Many municipalities simply don't have any kind of bounty or bylaw in that regard. What we're looking at recommending through that draft staff report is that we continue with the ten thousand dollars increase this year to help us reflect the increased number of claims we're seeing on both the beavers and the coyote side. And that in twenty twenty-five, should council see fit, we endeavor to review both of those bylaws, both in terms of streamlining the processes, making it easier on trappers hopefully, and municipalities in that regard, but also in terms of thoroughly investigating whether or not those bounties need to increase. What we've seen in talking to some of the trappers is in some cases, they rely solely on the bounty. Certain municipalities don't pay when they want trapping done on municipal lands. Versus if they're dealing with a private landowner, they would be collecting their fee from the private landowner and collecting a bounty from the county in that regard. So one of the things we want to look into in that bylaw review is sort of what is that county role there? And should we be offering this bounty? And if so, what's that appropriate value? Knowing that there could be other forms of compensation there, too. So for now, this ten thousand is just meant to reflect the increased number of claims, not necessarily an increased dollar value per plane, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. And I'm looking here. I'm going to go to Counselor Greg next.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. At this time, I would move before council that the funding of five thousand dollars for the Forest Festival be removed from the budget. It was removed last year. This is an item that has been funded through the Gray Sobal Conservation Authority's supportive of it, but it's indicative of certain items where I'm hesitant to see taxpayers funding through multiple levels of government the same projects. So I think this is one that council should extract itself from funding.
Okay, I'm just going to, just before I look for a second, or I just want to put out to to County Council, if we want to collect those items and then circle back for motions, just we, we, we're on a on a good hub right now of being able to introduce the information, and people may they may want to reflect on how they vote on particular items depending on what the holistic package looks like. So Counselor Greg, if you would be amenable, I would suggest that we perhaps come back to suggested motions, and I do see, if you will allow me, I'll just go to Counselor McQueen, who's put up his hand for input, and then we'll make a decision from there. Counselor McQueen?
Yeah, this, I have a, going back to the conversation that Counselor Mackey was talking about. So I can wait till if somebody else wants to talk to this item?
Okay, so there were some questions for discussion, so may I ask Counselor Greg? Okay, I'm seeing your nod of your head that will hold on to our thoughts. Any council members, if they wish to put forth a motion, if you could make a note of that, and then we'll come back to it when we've had a chance to see the introduction of the specific materials. Thank you. So with that, then there was a question from Counselor McQueen in terms of the content.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and just following up with Counselor Mackey. This sort of came out of correspondence that we received to County Council with regards to the issue around bounties around beaver and coyote. And I think it was, I think it was sort of mentioned at that time that that individual could come and personally speak to County Council, and if, you know, further questions or follow-up on that would be, I think something that was, I thought that was maybe a suggestion. I know that individual who sent the correspondence had been on CBC Morning a few days after, I guess CBC picked that story up and certainly had him on the morning show of the Ontario Morning, not long after that correspondence was presented. So it would be good if, you know, from, you know, to Scott, if you're bringing that report forward, if that is a possibility for that individual to speak to County Council, because I think it maybe would have, be, would be very good if he could, the ability to ask questions and just sort of on his thoughts on and why he was thinking of that compensation should be increased. So I think he sort of, it was an individual that's on the, you know, it's, you know, hitting the ground running type of thing. He's at that ground level. So I don't know if that's a possibility or not. I think it would maybe be helpful for county councils as well, along with myself.
Okay, I did see Director Taylor did make a note while you were speaking, so I'll just look to him.
Through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your question, Counselor McQueen. Certainly if it's council's direction, we can certainly invite Mr. Stocking to speak with council. We did have a discussion at the last Agricultural Advisory Committee with respect to their input on this. I would note, just for interest sake, one of the reasons why we're recommending council that we review these bylaws is because in both bylaws, there's currently a clause that only allows for trappers that are residents of Gray County to trap in Gray County. Mr. Stocking, as my understanding, is a resident of Bruce County. So strictly speaking, under the current bylaw, unless granted an exemption, he's not actually eligible for these bounties, which is one of the many reasons I think we're going to be recommending to to look at updating the bylaws. But certainly if it's council's wish, we've had a follow-up discussion with Mr. Stocking and more than happy to see if he has time available to come as a deputation to council, if that's the direction.
Okay, thank you. And with that, then we're going to go to Counselor Kivony, and then we're going to go to Counselor Borden Yon after that.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and with your indulgence, I have two questions, if I may. And both for Scott, of course. And the first one, Scott, I'm wondering if you could expand a little bit. The sixty thousand dollars for the completion of an updated growth management study. We recognize it's not very long since Simpson did the first one, and obviously there's new numbers from MOF. So can the first study be revised, or is this a full new study on the growth management side?
Sorry, through you, Madam Warden. Great question, Counselor Kivony. We've been doing growth management strategies at various intervals since about two thousand and seven now. And anytime we do an update or a new study, it's always building off the previous study. So certainly, as you noted, that previous study was done in twenty twenty-one, so it's still relatively recent. But when we do an update to these studies, we would look to take in all the most recent information. So we'd consider the twenty twenty-one study, we'd consider the Ministry of Finance numbers, but then we'd also chat with each of your nine municipalities to get on-the-ground growth numbers in that regard, both in terms of the planning applications that are coming in, but even more importantly, the building permits that are coming in. So this work would build off the previous work. It would be a slightly expanded scope, both in terms of the Ministry of Finance numbers, but also in terms of some of the numbers that Liz Buckton is needing to work with on the Housing Action Plan implementation and dating back to that Town of Blue Mountains request with respect to regional direction or regional housing strategy in that regard. So we're hopeful that we can feed two birds with one scone here and get some of the work we need for the growth piece, but also for that Housing Action Plan implementation piece, which is why the sixty thousand is slightly more than the fifty thousand we had considered in the ten-year capital from a few years ago for this project.
Thank you very much for that, Scott. And with Madam Warden's permission, my second question in relation to invasive species. I note the buckthorn program, but is the county doing anything specifically about hogweed?
Through you, Madam Warden. We don't have a targeted program there other than obviously trying to eradicate it when we find it kind of thing. So Gray Sobal staff regularly patrol both the county forests and the CP rail trail in that regard. And then we also have keen trail users that are quick to point out certain things. So we are working on invasives on a number of front. We're also looking at applying for some invasive species fund, or invasive species eradication funding early in the new year. But we don't have a targeted hogweed program in the same way that we do buckthorn in that regard. But that also doesn't mean we're ignoring it. We're still trying to eradicate it where it does pop up.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll go to Counselor Borden Yon.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through Warden Metrusovs to Scott. Counselor Kivony did ask one of my questions, but Scott touched on it briefly, and I'd just like to expand on that. Looking at the Housing Action Plan and the requests, you know, not just from the Blue Mountains, but we could have nine different plans out there, and I think it would make sense, and that's why we looked at it from the local level from a regional standpoint. Based on the numbers, looking at thirty thousand per year and the requests to make it more, I guess, county-wide to affect all municipalities, is that an adequate number when you factor in with the sixty thousand for the growth management plan?
Through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your question, Counselor Barnion. So Liz Buckton could speak to this far more intelligently than I could. But there were three reports brought to committee the whole on October tenth, which considered sort of the broad scale of the Housing Action Plan implementation. It covered things like what have we done to date, what do we still need to do, and how could we work together to come up with a regional strategy similar to the town's request, but that would serve all. And so if I can paraphrase Liz's reports in that regard, through updating the growth management strategy and through working with the rural housing information system, we're thinking that that will set us in good stead from a data perspective such that we can do additional work in-house on that regional strategy front using tools like the Housing Needs Assessment Tool that CMHC has put out and various other data sets. So the plan for twenty twenty-five, should council support this budget, would be that we're working to get all that data in order in twenty twenty-five to set ourselves in good stead to start to work on sort of that regional strategy, probably later in twenty twenty-five and more so into twenty twenty-six in that regard. Certainly happy to expand on that if you wish, but at a high level, that's my understanding of the project.
Okay, I don't see any further follow-up on that. And I don't see any further hands, so nicely timed. Thank you very much, Director Taylor. So what we'll do now is we'll take a break. Madam Clerk, if we come back at quarter two, okay, so if we come back at eleven forty-five, we'll reconvene and we'll begin directly with Director Myers and Economic Development. Thank you.
Madam Warden?
Oh, yes.
And when do you think you're going to take lunch?
So, yeah, so we have our lunch scheduled for one o'clock. That's why we're doing, yeah, that's why we're doing the break now. And then we'll still have a good hour and fifteen minutes before the break. Thank you for, before lunch. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarity.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Warden. Good morning, County Council, everybody here and online. I am going to take you through the economic development, tourism, culture, operating, and then we'll pause before we do capital. So that is our plan. And I also want to say thank you very much to Laura, Matt, Mary Lou, Sue, Kim and Randy. Because we did a lot of work on this budget this year. I've gone through a lot of transitions over the last year and we wanted to make sure we had a budget that reflected it. And that was making no good efficiency sense as we work through it every day with council and with staff. So we've done a ton of shifts, but I'm going to take you through all of those so that you can understand where we are and where we're planning to go. So the 2025 Economic Development Tourism Culture Budget includes a net departmental requirement, so operating and capital. Of 3.49 million and that's compared to 3.296 in 2024. Or an increase of $195,900. And I'm on page 80, just in case anybody's wondering. The 2025 budget continues its key focuses and priorities based on the Economic Development Tourism Culture Master Plan that was approved in 2023. And we officially started work on in 2024. This sets a departmental vision for the next 10 years and gives us a very strategic five-year action plan to move forward. And that's what this budget has been based on. Did I do that? Okay, sorry. I thought I hit a button with my stuff. Okay, perfect. So the cost centers, I'm going to take you through, there are five different ones outlined here, but I'm focusing on the four that apply to our department specifically. So Economic Development and Tourism General, Local Immigration Partnerships, Sinem Campus and Great Roots Museum and Archives. So looking at the Economic Development and Tourism General Operating Budget for 2025. This requires a contribution of 1.164 million, which is an increase of 70,100 as compared to 2024. So as I mentioned, some of the changes that we've made, this operating budget has been reorganized. So we're amalgamating four budgets into one. So the Economic Development and General Tourism now includes the general. Regional attraction retention, local food and tourism, all under one umbrella. And this is really meant to align with the most recent departmental restructuring that we did after 2024. So through this budget, we've reallocated funds to align with the next set of strategic priorities. This includes a year of fulsome study that prioritizes a regional economic development lens. Foundational tools such as the GIS Dashboard and Spotlight, Sector Reports, Industrial Land Tools. Sector Summits and Leadership Forums are all being maintained through this budget. And they'll also be used to unlock a systemic review, enabling the E D T C Master Plan Priorities. 1.3, 2.2 and 2.4 to be brought to the fore and studied. And what those items are specifically applied to. Sorry, am I okay to keep going? Yeah, okay, sorry. Those specifically apply to municipal partnerships, systems mapping and municipally owned employment lands. So those are those focus areas. The Gather Campaign will also lead our regional marketing efforts to intentionally demonstrate and encourage community pride. And staff are focusing on the highest and best value content and channels to align our tourism messaging also. With recruitment messaging to speak jointly to our current community and the hopeful future recruits that we'll someday have here in Gray County. So the majority of the budgetary increase for 2025 comes from non-union salary review and benefit increases. The $30,000 increase that UCM studies has been offset by matching reductions in other budget lines to bring this priority forward. The $25,000 increase in advertising, image and graphic development and promotion public relations. Is offset by revenues from provincial funding. And this is funding that we know to be true. We have secured the funding. Any additional funding we would like to apply for in the future has not been included in this budget because it's not guaranteed, but these things we do know are true. So there's 50,400 from Rural Economic Development Funding and RTO 7 Digital Advertising budgeted in this account. The majority of the $18,000 increase from hosted events is offset from cost recoveries. You'll see an increase there as well in revenue. So overall, our hosted events are offset by nearly half from cost recoveries. Looking at Local Immigration Partnership Operating Budget. As you know, this budget is fully funded from a federal grant through IRCC. This funding goes until March 31st, 2025, at which time the program will move to Bruce County. And the budget will be fully under Bruce County. So you won't see it here anymore. But on the ground, you will not see a difference in the program as it relates for the next three years. This is a partnership that we've had with Bruce County for the last five years and we look forward to continuing that. But now shifting the partner responsibilities, all of the administrative side of GB Lip will move to the other county. Lip is focused on coordinating services and supporting employers and organizations and an indirect delivery. Agent, which means that we are not able to work directly with newcomers, but we're working with organizations, municipalities, school boards. All of the organizations that would work with newcomers themselves, but we ourselves are not allowed to work directly. The Sedum Campus Operating Budget enables the campus to fulfill its skills training, trades, and innovation mandate. It supports entrepreneurial services from startup to scale up, access through skills training, trades, and innovative partnerships that we have built through the campus, which includes our E C E, our early learning hub, and daycare partnership, as well as a Makerspace and Trades, and now with Henry Burnick on site, the B E C and Makerspace as well. The operating budget levy requirements support the facility totals 246,700, which is a 35,100 deduction from 2024. And this budget's also assisted by an expected 162,000 increase, which is 52,600 more than 2024, and that is because of tenant revenues and leasing costs. We also receive an interfunctional rent of 14,700 from Children's Services. From these revenues, 80,000 every year is put aside into capital budgets for future reserves. So that's what enables us to complete the capital requirements year over year without a levy impact. This is where it's coming from. On the Business Enterprise Center Budget, so this supports increased inquiries, consultations, and referrals from entrepreneurs and directly results in new business startups, expansions, business succession, and job creation. This budget supports these services along with the co-development of entrepreneurial ecosystem through Sedum Campus, which is priority four of our master plan. It is funded by a provincial grant of $231,800 in 2025 and requires a net levy of 142,900, which is an increase of 22,000 over 2024. We are currently working in a new contribution agreement that was announced this summer, and it will go until March 31st, 2026, which included an additional $26,000 in grants for starter and company or summer company plus. So that's where you'll see a $26,000 increase in payments to individuals and organizations. Those are the grants that we are flowing through for the province. Turning now to Gray Roots Operating Budget, the 2025 Gray Roots Budget includes operating requirement of 1.717 million compared to 1.6 in 2024, which is an increase of $112,600. Last year's budget included one-time funding to support operating costs and reduction of levy contributions to capital projects. This has been reduced by 202,900 for the 2025 budget year, contributing to an overall reduction of revenues by 242,400. Gray Roots will see an operating expenditure decrease of 129,000 overall as a reduction in staff salaries and benefits. In 2025, Gray Roots will continue with strategic priorities focused on programming and partnership development, which includes additional interactive experiences and the use of the theater's newly upgraded technology. Gray County Gallery will be completed from substantial renovation in 2025, which is very exciting because it is original to the building from 2004 and provides a foundation for programs, workshops, events, and lectures. Staff anticipate a banner year, because dinosaurs are coming back. That is our summer exhibit from May through September for the American Museum of Natural History. So we already know that we're going to have excellent showing next year at Gray Roots. During this time, Morriston Heritage Village will undergo some operational adjustments so that we can better provide access and experiences for staff, volunteers, and visitors alike. We're in the middle of a lean project right now and really looking forward to some of the recommendations coming out of that for 2025.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Myers. And just before we go to questions for you, I just want to give a moment for the gray transit route. I'd like to give a moment to CA One Grove to add something on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden Masterson. So as Council can see in the budget package, and as we've discussed at this table on a number of occasions, the provincial community transportation program funding wraps up as of March 31st, 2025. Council had earlier made a decision that without that provincial partnership, we wouldn't be extending the existing service. Since that time, there have been two new program announcements. The Rural Transit Solutions Fund, which is a federally funded grant program, as well as the Ontario Transit Initiatives Fund. Gray County is working actively with a number of partners on applications to both of those programs. And specifically, and I think this is a something that's pretty new for us. We are looking at developing a solution with input from Bruce, Dufferin, and Wellington Counties, as well as with, as I say, some of the nonprofit providers. This is a very it's a project really based on information gathering and analysis about how we can leverage the existing investments that are made by a number of entities into various transit solutions and what the opportunity might be to bring all of those things together. The OTIF program, the provincial program, also provides some operating money where the federal program is strictly for the planning and analysis project. In an earlier discussion with the Budget and Finance Committee, we talked about providing some seed funding by Gray County that would support our contribution to an operating aspect of the project, as well as a little bit of the consulting that might be required to move this whole thing forward. So what you have before you is $178,000 in one-time funding. The 78 is the money that was required to take us to March 31st on CTP. And the $100,000 would be if we were successful with our grant applications. This would be the county's contribution to seeing those projects move to fruition. I'll have a little bit more to say about some of this enclosed session, but that's the explanation for the 178K that you see here.
Okay, thank you very much. So if we could put on the screen our virtual participants, we'll open it up to either questions for Director Myers or for Madam CAO. And I'm looking around the room, not seeing any hands go up here. I'm looking on the screen, no hands. Well, Director Myers, you did give us a lot of information, so thank you very much. I think that that's it. I think you've answered. You've anticipated questions and answered them along the way. Okay, excellent. So that allows us now to move on to the capital side.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, so looking at the capital portion of the budget, this requires a net requirement of $222,500, an increase of 26,600 compared to 2024. The Economic Development Capital Budget and Tourism Capital Budget remain separate for 2025. So I just wanted to make that note. With operating, we made the merge. Capital, we left separate, but that is something that we're now looking at for 2026, just to streamline all throughout the process. So the Economic Development General Capital for 2025 includes the following activities. We have a $6,700 transfer to reserve from the levy to update the E D T C master plan scheduled for 2028. We have $3,100 transfer from reserve from levy to replace the tourism vehicle in 2026. You will note that we have moved that back several times because our vehicle is still operational and functions. Everything's fine with it. So every year we will reassess that, and if we are still in good shape, we'll bump it back again. So we won't replace it until we absolutely have to replace the vehicle. For tourism capital, the 2025 budget includes $40,000 for a website upgrade to visit Gray's tourism website. The 25,000 of that is funded from reserve and 15,000 is funded from levy. This has been aligned to the Gray Roots website update in 2025 in hopes that we can seek some economies of scale through the redevelopment in both sites within our department. 35,600 is being funded from reserve to complete the implementation of the cycling and trails master plan sign project. So this project completes the installation of the signs on county roads, which is fully funded from reserve and no levy impact. All of the signs are purchased in 2023 through federal funding, and we have signed all of North Gray in 2024, and now we're signing South Gray proposed in 2025. We also have a $6,700 transfer to reserve towards the future master plan from the tourism component. $4,700 transfer to reserve for the tourism vehicle replacement, and an $1,100 transfer to reserve for future sign replacements, which would include wayfinding signs, cycling signage, any of the signage that you see out on the roads. Sedum Campus Capital Budget, this budget includes $345,000 in reserve funding to complete HVAC improvements, which we started in 2024. We've had good success so far with our rooftop unit replacements and air source heat pump to align with our climate change policies as well. But we would like to continue that project and finish it with the internal unit. So we have 26 internal classroom units that all run on electric, all individual, and they suck a lot of power. So we'd like to upgrade that technology and do the necessary work within the budget that we have allotted. We're also proposing to move up the door replacement. So these are the external doors that have not been touched. We did the main entrance door during COVID. But we have several exterior doors that are starting to fail in big weather events, which causes lots of calls to staff and a security concern for the premise. So we want to make sure that we can get this handled, and we're proposing to move it up from the 2026 capital spot where it was positioned to do that work next year. We also have an $81,900 transfer to reserve to fund future capital projects. So this is merged with the operating transfer that we're taking from tenant revenues to make sure that we have enough in the budget to be able to do all of the capital work for the next 10 years and beyond. With Gray Roots Capital Budget, we require a net levy total of $101,300, and that's broken down into several projects. The $1,400 transfer to reserve to replace the riding lawnmower, when we do that, we would like to move to an electric one, again focusing on our climate change deliverables. But we are not replacing that until it is necessary. So we've also been bumping this one along and will continue to do that. So we have a $1,700 transfer to reserve for archives equipment upgrades, a $2,000 transfer for theater improvement reserve, $2,700 transfer to replace the tractor, and this is scheduled in alignment with transportation services because when they are completed with that piece of equipment, we then purchase it from them as asset replacement. $4,000 transfer to reserve for digital museum and website in the future. 11,000 transfer for front of house updates, and that includes all of the lobby space right outside the museum where the picnic tables are and the seating areas. That's all considered front of house. 18,500 transfer to capital improvements for Morriston Heritage Village. And then a $60,000 transfer to reserve for capital improvements to the Gray Roots main building. And as we noted with Budget and Finance Committee, in keeping with our master plan, any future builds and Morriston contribution was removed as part of the budget last year and continues to be removed this year. We also have a couple of transfers to reserve that are funded through sponsorship, and that totals $46,000. So 38,000 is being transferred to the Gray Gallery Reserve and 8,000 transferred to the general store reserve. The capital projects for 2025 are as follows. We've got 41,300 for theater upgrades. And as you remember from a report that we had earlier this year, that is funded due to sponsorship, which is very much appreciated from Thomas Wielden. $40,800 for improvements to road signage, and that is the actual sign when you're entering Gray Roots. It is falling apart and is becoming a safety hazard. It's 20 years old. So this will provide those necessary replacements. $40,000 to redo the website, enabling us to do a better job with virtual exhibits, online programs, and digital collections as we see that interest continuing to grow, enabling further digital inclusion. 36,000 towards caulking and control joints at the museum. 29,200 for carpet replacement in the theater and archives, which is also original to the building 20 years ago, and we've been pushing that one along, but we're starting to see seams lift, and we don't want to have any chance of slip and fall. 20,400 for equipment upgrades in the archives, which will enable us to bring more digital components online. We are switching from a microfiche, which is what we had been budgeting for many years, to a hand scanner that allows us to scan documents and books as they come in and have a virtual copy of them. So for those really delicate items, it's really important to make that move. We have $15,000 towards the Visigo Control Point of System Migration, which is part of our building automation system. We are aligning with Sedum and the admin building here, but the server that we have is not IT approved anymore. It needs to be updated in order to hold this new system. So we are going to do that work with council approval, and then $4,000 funded from reserve to complete the front of house upgrades, which we've carried forward from 2024. So this includes transforming part of the lobby into a tourism destination. Now that our other neighboring destinations no longer have that available, Gray Roots will step back in.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll just go back to visiting our online participants on the screen, and I'll look around the room if there are any questions. And we'll begin with Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Savannah. Always so exciting, everything that's happening in Act F. Just one question in relation to the signage, and I remember it's a few years ago now when RTO seven was supporting some of the lower tiers in the county with wayfinding signage. So I'm just curious to know if there were any similar programs happening now, or in what way do we really work with RTO seven?
That's a great question for you, Madam Warden. We work very closely with RTO seven. We haven't on the wayfinding side of things, only because the requirements have been very particular. And RTO seven, a couple of years ago, gave everyone the opportunity to decide what type of wayfinding signing or signage would make the most sense in their communities and within their budgets. So they would have been really flexible and accommodating. So we mirror a lot of what they have, and that's why the color consistency with the blue signs, green signs, yellow, whatever it happens to be. But we aren't doing a project specifically with RTO seven at the county level, but trying to mirror and align.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll go to Deputy Warden Milne.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Savannah, thank you for your your description of the budget here. Specifically, Gray Roots and transfers to reserves for future building in Morriston Village. I identified this during the budget deliberations at the committee level, and I'm still concerned that if we're not planning to put any more buildings into that village in the future in terms of building reserves, you know, it's very likely to keep putting it off. And I think it's important to always build for the future, anticipating new and exciting things in the village. I mean, if we'd never been putting anything into reserves for the general store years ago, it probably never would have happened. So I'm just wondering, you know, what are the plans to mitigate that lack of putting money into reserves for new builds in Morriston Village? Please.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. That is an excellent question, and I do appreciate it. Have thought a lot about it since Budget and Finance Committee. And if council would indulge, what we would propose as staff is to complete the lean project that we're working on in the village right now so that we have a really good understanding of how we're able to continue operating and maintaining what we have today. And then comparing that against the plan, because there is a built-out plan for all of Morriston and to really prioritize where that might be. So if you would be okay with it, we'd like to bring back a business case for you and for council to consider. And then potentially in the 2026 budget, we could include a transfer to reserve back in after we've had time to do all of the analysis, understand where we can go based on this lean project, and put that business case together for you.
As always, an excellent answer. Thank you, Savannah, very much.
Thank you. And next we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Warden. Just on that regards to a comment on the electric riding lawnmower. I know I've seen at a few of our conference vendors where they sell certain things to municipalities. There's more than one vendor that will sell you electric lawnmower, but it also has the programming that you don't need a rider. It'll go out and sort of like your vacuum cleaner in your house that the zoom boom or whatever you call it that goes around, that will also do the outside. Once it knows its boundaries, it just goes out and cuts the grass on its own. So I don't know if that's something that I just wanted to raise it because I have seen it and I thought, hmm, that saves or has an issue with staffing and stuff like that, and it does it automatically. It may be something that, and maybe there's a grant available for something like that technology as well. I don't know. But anyway, just food for thought.
Okay, it sounds like a motorized goat. Okay. Is there, are there any other questions? Not seen any others. So thank you very much, Director Myers. It looks like we are ready to move on. We have 45 minutes remaining before lunch, so we are ready to move into human services. So I'm going to invite Director Spicer back up to do an introduction. So I'm gonna invite Director Spicer back up to do an introduction.
I think Jen and I must be like the Boy Scouts. I also have a plug in one in my laptop bag, just in case. Thank you, Madam Warden. So now we'll move into the human services portion of today's budget meeting. The 2025 budget for human services, so that includes social services, children's services, housing, long-term care, and paramedic services, requires a net levy requirement total of operating capital budgets of thirty three million, seven hundred and six thousand eight hundred dollars, compared to thirty two million, two hundred and four thousand, one hundred dollars in 2024. An increase of one million, five hundred and two thousand dollars, seven hundred dollars. Included in this is an increase to the levy of six hundred thousand dollars for the Rockwood Terrace redevelopment project that began construction this year. Now I'll turn it over to Anne-Marie Shaw to speak to the social services budget component.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Starting off with our social services budget, this includes Ontario Works and early learning and childcare. We have a budget of three million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, which is an increase of a hundred and fifty two thousand, seven hundred dollars. Social assistance section is an increase of one thousand nine hundred dollars. Social assistance consists of the benefits and also the actual assistance that we would provide to recipients. There is an increase, light increase of one, one thousand and nine hundred dollars as a result that we still continue to see an increase in the need for funerals for our non-social assistance recipients. These are funerals that we provide for people that, we provide the funding for people that are unable to. This is offset by expenditures, removal of expenditures in our seniors dentures program. Since the introduction of the Ontario Seniors Dent and Care Program, we have seen a reduction and actually no applications to that program. We also include in the 2025 budget, we do an estimate on what our caseload might be for 2025. We base it on what we're seeing, and also the province also gives us an indication. We're looking at a six point seven percent increase over the 2024. This seems to be a trend. Over the last few years, we have seen an increase of a minimum of about a hundred cases per year. Two thousand and twenty-three, our caseload was around twelve hundred and thirty people receiving Ontario Works. Two thousand and twenty-four, we're trending on looking at about thirteen hundred and sixty. And so we're assuming next year we will be around the fourteen hundred and fifty-four. As per the Ministry of Children, Community, and Social Services direction, there has been no increase to the social services benefits, and it will remain at seven hundred and thirty-three dollars per month. Ontario Works, this section is an increase of eleven hundred and eight hundred dollars, and this is the funding that we need in order to provide the services that we provide. In 2018, our funding was frozen, and the province has increased funding allocation for this year in the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred, with a fifty percent cost share. These funds will go towards funds that we have already provided in previous years. We were putting more levy in than than the fifty fifty, so that will reduce that, and it also will provide us the funding required for an additional caseworker to keep up with the increase that we are seeing in our caseload. Early learning and childcare. In our early learning and childcare budget, we have allocation or assumed that we will have one million and twelve hundred, or twelve thousand dollars required as our municipal cost share. We did see a decrease in our funding, administrative funding from ten percent to five percent. This had a significant increase on our budget, but we did come to council previously, and we did have a reduction in three positions. That would be our looking at a reduction in three positions of two, trying to find it where it is here. We've a fee subsidy worker, a professional learning, and also one of our managers, our early learning and childcare managers. So with this reduction, we do are able to continue on offering the services that we have with a slight reduction in what is provided to our childcare providers and to our families. We'll keep on trucking in 2025 to try and determine what other concerns or shortages these may meet or may make, but we will certainly be back to council if we're seeing any significant decreases or results in the community because of the cuts. With the new cost-based system for the Canada-wide early learning and childcare, the funding approach has changed. It has created a system in which parents are seeing their fees reduced. And in two thousand and twenty-five, the reduction will be capped at twenty-two dollars a day. This is a significant decrease for most of our parents, which before this, we're probably paying anywhere from forty-five to sixty dollars a day for childcare. So this is certainly a good program. The funding that we receive from the province has been divided and changed into different sections. We now have an early wide learning, early learning and childcare section, and then we also have local priorities, and we continue to receive funding for our early on program. So in the pages that you're looking at, you'll see that there are a number of changes in trying to put it in an easy way for you to digest as we're going from a different system to another system. Looking at our C-Welks, so that's again is our Canada-wide early learning and childcare. We will receive an additional ten million dollars in funding in or and we are shifting four million dollars to local priorities. So this funding is what we provide to our childcare providers, so that it's that difference between what the parent is paying and what the actual fee is. So with that program, we do have an increase in a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to our administration budget. Again, this is due to our decrease. We see an increase in our cost share to the Wage Enhancement Administration, and we also have an increase in our early learning and childcare planning and data analysis of eleven hundred and three hundred dollars. And this allows us to do our consulting that we do to the, to the public, to our families, to make sure that we're providing the services that are required. With the new funding, there is a decrease in our early on by fifty-six thousand and six hundred. The licensed home childcare, we provide, the county acts as a licensed home childcare agency that oversees rostered home childcare providers, and we support about twenty-seven providers. Within that, the local priorities, we have a fee subsidy program in which we assist families with childcare expenses. So it's the difference between what their income will allow them to pay and what the expenses actually are. We have an early on program in which the county operates, one in Hanover. We provide special needs resourcing programs, providing in-classroom supports to children. We have, we support an resource hub for early ECE students and early learning and childcare staff in Gray County. The hub is located at Sidneyham Campus, and also that's where the classrooms are for the ECE program. So there's been a lot of great support for students too. And they've been getting to know, you know, the services that are available in Gray County, so hopefully we'll be able to retain some. The budget also shows an increase in administration and a decrease in the early on budget. And again, this is just due to the different funding model. So if you look on page one twenty-four, we provide an indigenous-led operating budget to Mewipudon, and this is a provincially funded and supported program. We also have our county social initiatives. So these initiatives are various, I guess, programs and services that were at one time approved for council funding that are there to provide services in gaps where we find service, gaps and services that are in the community. There are a number of great organizations which support children and also are more vulnerable populations. Ontario Works Capital, the capital is there for laptops, we end monitor replacements, and it is made through a reserve. Pay it to reserve, and we have our early learning and childcare capital, a budget in which we have one point nine million dollars for a new early on building construction in Hanover. The project will be funded from reserves, and the proceeds from the sales of the building in, of the early on existing building in 2026 will be transferred to reserves, and that is also hopefully moving forward in 2025.
Okay, thank you. So we'll pause here for questions, and we'll look to the screen. I'm gonna look around the room. We're gonna begin with Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Thanks, Anne-Marie, for your presentation. The county services initiatives, roughly three hundred thousand dollars, that how is it evaluated, or when is it evaluated to make sure that we are getting the best bang for the buck, and, you know, those dollars are going where they really are gonna have the biggest impact?
Through you, Madam Warden. So each year, we ask for an annual report on what the monies were spent for, and look at whether or not that service is still required within our, the county, and whether or not there's another service that might be similar, where we could look at, you know, combining funds or looking at organizations and having a conversation about that. For example, the Keystone Services Counseling for School Age Children, that supports sixty individual children who have very high needs. And in fact, most of the time, the person goes to them. So they provide a wraparound service. A lot of the times, it's either in the school with that child or at home. So it's a, it's a service that there is not funding for that, that particular need through MCCS as at the time. And it's actually a program that was came about because of that need and has grown exponentially. Funding has stayed the same though, and they have, they have managed to make it work with the funds that we have given them. So those are the things that we kind of look at to determine whether or not they're still relevant.
Okay, I'm not seeing any hands online. We'll go to Counselor Eccles.
The dental program. How's that integrated with the dental program that Grey Booth's Health Unit runs as well, too? Is, is it enhanced, or are you just integrated?
Through you, Madam Warden. The program was, the one through Grey Booth's Health Services was for children. This one was specifically for seniors and dentures, but I would assume both programs are probably now becoming non-existent because of the new system through the Ontario government or through the, through the province, so. But they weren't integrated because they were sorting two different populations.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any further hands in the room or on the screen, so Director Shaw, I think we can carry on with housing.
The 2025 housing budget includes a net operating capital requirement of nine million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, which is an increase of five hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred. Revenue, we are seeing an increase in our revenue from our tenants of forty-two thousand, two hundred compared to two thousand and twenty-four. This is an estimate in what we are hoping to see. We are also seeing an increase, or sorry, and I guess, an increase in bad debt write-off, which increases our budget by twelve thousand dollars, and a decrease in some of our malicious, malicious our other revenue, which is, which is, yeah, our other revenue, which is probably our laundry. So overall, our tenant-related revenue will reflect a budget increase of around eighteen thousand and seven hundred dollars. We are seeing a reduction in our federal funding. As our debentures fall off, then so does our federal funding, but unfortunately, they never seem to happen at the same time. So this year, we're seeing a decrease, but we actually had a savings of debentures of about three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Most of those matured in two thousand and twenty-four. We did see this inequity happening, and so we did use about six, sixty thousand dollars in our 2024 budget in order to prevent the spike, so we will be putting that money back into our reserves. Operating expenditures, we have seen an increase in our salaries and benefits. We have thirty-two staff that are looking at our administration, our tenant services, our building custodians, and our in-house repairs and maintenance teams. We are seeing an increase of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in various maintenance accounts on other costs and frequency of repairs. So for instance, our costs are going up when it comes to having a contractor come in, and sometimes because our buildings are aging, we're seeing those increase, housing or those increase, an increase in the times we're calling. Our insurance premiums, we saw a significant increase in two thousand and twenty-four November it starts. So for, for next year, and this end of this year, our insurance premiums went up significantly due to the market and also due to the fact that we are trying to make sure that we have enough funds to cover what the actual cost of replacement is now. So we are seeing an eighty-four thousand dollar increase for insurance. Our hydro, natural gas, and water, an increase of about seventy-four thousand dollars estimated. And again, we're looking at an average of what we're seeing over the last three years. We are setting up a transfer to reserve to reduce the liability of our insurance deductible. Our deductible is a hundred thousand dollars. So when we have a fire like we had this summer, we don't have funds to put towards that. So it comes out of our regular reserve, or it comes out of, or puts us into a deficit. So this reserve will allow us to have some funds to put towards that. We also have increased the security in our buildings by twelve thousand dollars, and we have a slight increase for interfunctional information system charges. These are being offset by the decrease in debenture payments that I mentioned earlier. We also have a forty thousand dollar decrease in our property tax expense due to the multi-residential tax rate. And we also have an increase in admin fees in our provincial programs. Fourteenth Street, we did receive funding for support services to a twenty-four hour level. CMHC or CMHA is providing this service, and that happened in September of 2024. We recently had five graduates from the program that have gone on to live in either our housing, private housing, or with CMHA. All five of these people were experiencing chronic homelessness. Our revenues are also changing for rent subs. We used to use a rent supplement through one of our provincial programs, and now that program, we have not received the guidelines yet, but we did receive notice from the province that the funds will be directed or want them to be directed towards new builds. So we are putting in forty thousand dollars from our, our other funding in order to, to make up for that. Nonprofit housing, we have nine nonprofit housing providers that we support throughout Gray County. They provide up five hundred and fifty-plus units of market and rent gear-to-income housing. We are seeing an increase in thirty-one thousand, sorry, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred. And this is just due to, and determined by provincial indices. So the province provides us, here's how much we are seeing an increase for insurance, their averages that they use for across the province, and their funding then is reflected with those increases. Provincially funded programs, these are all a hundred percent funded by the province. We have a number of programs. Provincially funded programs, these are all a hundred percent funded by the province. We have a number of programs. Uh, the Canada, Ontario Housing Benefit, uh, this provides a subsidy directly to um residents who are eligible. To be on the housing um services or housing waitlist. Uh, we have a community, uh, Canada, Ontario Community Housing Initiative. Um, this provides provincial funding um that looks at rent supplements, new constructions, uh renovations. Provides a, a menu of services for ourselves and for our nonprofits. We have our Ontario Prior, uh, Priorities Housing Initiative. Um, again, another separate fund uh looking at new builds, renovations and rent supplements. We have Indigenous Housing Support Benefit, which we work with our friends at Mekwood, Mekwoodon, um, and they provide rent supplements. We have our homelessness prevention program in which we receive uh three million two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Um, this program provides uh supports for um. It, for all of our emergency ser, uh, um, housing services, our hostel funding, our rent supplements. That provides case management support and sustainable housing benefits. Um, we do not have any um funding amounts or allocations from the province for the two thousand and twenty-five budget. So we based this on what we were receiving for two thousand and twenty-four. And then next I'm on to capital. Would you like me to uh break for questions, Madam Chair?
Yes, this is a good time for us to take a pause. I'll look around the room. And I'm not seeing any hands in the room. I will go to councillor Carlton.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, just a question for Anne Marie. When you say that you're basing some of these numbers on two thousand twenty-four amounts that were received. Do you expect to see any increases, any, any of those items going into twenty-five and twenty-six?
Through you, Madam Chair. I hope so. Um, I think that housing is in the forefront, housing is then a big issue. Um, it, it's a crisis right now. I think that with an election coming up, we're hoping that we're seeing um the same funding, if not more. Um, there was an announcement on um yesterday that came out about encampment funding. So we're looking forward to possibly um getting some, some more funding for people experiencing homelessness in our, in our own communities.
Thank you. And next we'll go to councillor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden. Just a question regarding the revenue and the forty-two thousand two hundred from collective from tenants. Um, can you just help me understand the, is it a percentage increase that the province allows us to increase the? The rents over, is there some increase in rent or is this more of an increase due to the number of units?
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, there's a couple of factors. Um, one would be an increase that we would see through um our own rent. Um, we have a maximum that we can charge. So for instance, it might be a one bedroom might be uh five hundred and fifty dollars. And then we would increase it by um a certain percentage, whatever the rent percentage might be, maybe one point five percent. We don't have a whole lot of people that pay maximum rent, but that would account for some of this. Um, and the other one would be for um CPP and OAS, someone that is on um a fixed income. Will receive a little bit of an increase, so thirty percent is what we always look at, so that thirty percent might increase slightly too. So for the one thousand units that we have, um, it'll be a slight increase of forty-two thousand.
Okay, thank you. No further hands on the screen. Not, oh, we'll go over to councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden. Um, Anne Marie, can you speak to the number of names on the waiting list? And how it compares to other years and the time? Are we still looking at like one to five years?
Through you, Madam Warden. Um. Numbers on the waitlist have increased significantly. We are up over two thousand right now. Um, about seventy percent of our waitlist is usually from Gray County. Um, that's significant because often people are desperate and they'll put their name on a lot of waitlists around the province. But when we make an offer of housing, they don't normally take it. Um, so um. That's significant, yeah. Um, we've had a large increase. Um, last year we were around fifteen hundred, year before that, like we, we seem to be expanding quite a bit. There is a housing shortage and a housing crisis out there and we're certainly seeing it. Uh, as for timing, that of course has increased, uh, depending on what type of housing, what type of unit and where. Um, but normally we're looking at anywhere between four to six years. Now, we were usually around that two to five, probably about. Well, probably pre-COVID, we were anywhere from one to three and two to five afterwards, and now we're probably three to six, depending on the housing.
Thank you very much. And um, Director Myers, uh, sorry, Director Shaw. Uh, the, the, the number that you mentioned had graduated out into permanent housing. Could you just circle back to that? I didn't quite get the, the full numbers.
So of the fourteenth housing supportive, we have twelve units and we've had five so far that have graduated out. Um, and that's with uh since September, so.
Excellent. And as you mentioned, had previously experienced chronic uh difficulties in housing. Good news, thank you. Um, so with that then, I think we're ready to move on to the next section and we're on page one twenty-seven for those following along. Thank you.
Thank you. And on the capital budget, it's also page three hundred and thirty-six. So the two, uh, two thousand and twenty-five capital budget uh requires a levy of um one point nine million dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Compared to the two thousand and twenty-four capital budget. Um, the, there is a total of, of seven million eight hundred uh thousand in projects budgeted. Um, with six point eight million funded from a combination of reserves, proceeds from existing sales of units uh and federal and provincial grants. Um, this includes six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for regularly scheduled capital maintenance repairs. Um, these are things in our community housing that we do every year or that we have every year, such as appliance replacements, uh landscaping, security. Um, elevator repairs, uh, site improvements and other annual projects. And this is to the nine hundred and ninety-one units of community housing that we have. The budget includes um a federal conditional grant of one point nine million dollars that we received from CMHC. Um, we applied to a program in two thousand and twenty-three and were successful in which we would um. Receive thirty percent of our eligible repairs and upgrades to our housing portfolio for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. And it's certainly making a significant uh enhancement um to the money that we are spending in capital repairs. Uh, the capital budget is a combination of identified two thousand and twenty-five projects in the ten-year forecast. Uh, and projects that were either delayed or um put together uh because we were looking at doing groupings of, of, of projects. Um, it includes supply chain issues for thirteen projects with that have been carried forward to this year. Um, some of those are HVAC systems, even though we order them and we go through working with the consultant to see what we may need. Um, then it is normally about four to six months in order for the, for the um actual product to get to us. The capital budget also includes uh eight hundred thousand dollars in fire remediation work to be completed. Uh, for our building and own sound, and this of course will be uh refunded by insurance. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that, but also we have our transfer uh for um our Affordable Housing Fund, which sees an increase of six thousand five hundred dollars compared to two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. So just before you leave the lectern, we'll just put it out there in case there are any further questions. Okay, not seeing any hands on the screen or here in the chamber, so thank you very much for that update. And next we'll look to director Cornell. So we are with the introduction of long-term care at this point. Thank you.
Uh, great, thank you. Good afternoon, County Council. I guess this is what it feels like to be Scott Tyler. Maybe everyone would be more comfortable if he joined me at the election. Uh, thank you. Uh, so I always like to begin with a reminder about why we do what we do uh in the municipality and why we operate long-term care homes. So uh, for over a hundred and fifty years, uh, long municipalities have operated at least one long-term care home. And Gray County uh has been doing that for over a hundred and twenty years. So we have a long history of doing this work and for the last decade or so. Um, we have been working along the promise of providing long-term care home to Color It Your Way. And that is providing resident-centered care. And you may have heard uh some really exciting announcements lately. Uh, about emotional-based care and emotional-based care is uh an umbrella phrase that really aligns or. Describes the work that we do in our long-term care homes. That is what the Color It Your Way philosophy is based on, is an emotional-based model of care. Uh, it's resident-centered care. We support each resident with their unique care needs for both their physical and emotional wellbeing. This care and support is provided by our team members in each of the homes. And the, this proposed budget supports this promise in a number of ways. It's an investment in staff recruitment and retention. A focus on nutrition and meal service, as well as ensuring the building and maintenance upkeep of, of all of our three sites. The Committee of Man, the Long-Term Care Committee of Management is responsible to oversee the budgets for Gray Gables, Lee Manor and Rockwood Terrace. And the committee had an opportunity to review the budget, the proposed budget on November twelfth. Um, of last month, and it was also discussed at the Budget and Finance Committee on November twenty-fifth. This budget was developed through the collaborative efforts of Gray County Finance and Long-Term Care Staff. Uh, which is a one-sentence way of describing about five day-long budget labs over, starting about July. Uh, it's a complex and um and uh lengthy process to make sure that we're getting it right. I just want to make a quick note about revenue or funding. Funding for long-term care comes from three main areas. It comes from provincial funding, receipts from residents and from Gray County levy. On average, for the three long-term care homes, the majority of our, of that funding or revenue is received from provincial funding at sixty-five point two-five percent. The receipts from residents uh accounts for sixteen percent and the remaining eighteen point seven-five percent is funded by the county levy. This proposed budget is the first budget in a very long time. Where we can share that a significant investment has been made by the province in providing. Uh, care and service for the residents uh in our long-term care homes. Based on um, so. Uh, and that investment is linked with the direct care, um, the direct care hours and the goal of four hours. Of care provincially, a four-hour average provincially. So based on that and our projected two thousand twenty-four year-end surplus, the homes will be able to make additional contributions into our capital reserves as well. So this two thousand twenty-five long-term care proposed budget excluding redevelopment. Contains operating and capital expenses of just over forty-eight million dollars. It includes a net levy requirement of uh just over eight million dollars. Um, which is a decrease of seven hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred dollars or eight point one-two percent over last, uh, over last year. When looking at the proposed operating and capital budget and rolling in redevelopment, it's a total of ninety, just. Well, not just over, ninety-nine million eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, and that includes, uh, that still represents a decrease of a hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred dollars to the levy. Um, I am so pleased to be able to bring a budget forward that is looking at levy. Uh, the levy contribution is something we discussed a lot last year. And uh are really grateful for the provincial investment that allows us to do that today. And now I'm going to pass it over to Marcus, our Long-Term Care Finance Manager, to go over a high-level review. And um, and some of the details that make up our very complex budget in long-term care.
Thank you, Director Cornell, Madam Warden, Gray County Council. Uh, again, I'm providing a uh high-level discussion with this. As our Long-Term Care Committee of Management met on November twelfth to review the budget and we went into the. Uh, depths of every, every page and every line as we went through. And additionally, the Budget and Finance Committee reviewed on November twenty-fifth. This budget, as the, as the spark notices as the highest part, uh, is largely a revenue-driven budget. As that our expenses continued and increased uh along the predictability and along the trends that we're seeing across the county as a whole. We're seeing with uh agreed-upon collective agreements, we're seeing those, those increases that come from those colas. We're seeing some contracts that have expired and then renewed with their inflationary increases. A largely, again, our expenses uh advanced along the predictable. But with revenue, we're seeing some, some quite significant uh uh changes. So getting into the areas, we, starting off with the level of care-based funding. Last year in two thousand twenty-four, we received an unexpected increase of six point six percent increase across all the level of care uh funding increases. That is a lot more than what we've traditionally budgeted and we've always put budgeted one point five percent because that's been the increase that we have seen over numerous years. Budgeting for two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six, we budgeted again one point five percent because we cannot assume that that blip is the new standard. Of course, once we get the latest one, we'll see if there, we need to change anything going on a as-needed-for basis. Coming into Case Mix Index, this is the funding that is related to our level of acuity and core abilities that we have. So the, the care that takes with our residents, this again is a grading scale as to wherever we sit on our acuity against all other homes in the province. Is, is depending on how big of a slice of the funding you'll receive. Best analogy with that is that it is uh the same slice of pie, or it is the same size of a pie, but your slice depends on basically how hungry you are compared to everybody else. What we saw in two thousand twenty-four was that uh based on the calculations that we had at our hand, we believed that our Case Mix Index, we were going to receive less. Funding, we then received uh more funding than uh what happened with that one. What happens with that again is that there is, with Case Mix Index and with Direct Care, which I'll get to, there's an unknown variable that we don't have the access to. And that is how many beds and how many homes are online in the province. That number is kept uh guarded by the province itself. So we work with the numbers that we have, we work with Advantage, our advocacy group, where we were able to gauge and rate ourselves amongst all the not-for-profit and municipal homes. There's still the big question of when there is them saying, well, this home closed or this one was supposed to open but is deferred. Those sort of, those sort of things, we don't know. And basically what this is indicating is that last year, not as many homes were online as, as planned. Which means then we got a larger slice of it. Resident co-payment increases as at a uh, at a standard, standard rate. So this is a rate that the province provides us for both our basic semi-private and private uh levels. Those, those rates and those fundings, so the basic immediately impacts every resident. So that increase immediately goes on to their next month's, next month's bill when released in July. For the remainder though, if you are in semi-private or private, you are at the rate based on when you moved into the home. So we see these increases start to gradually uh see into our budget and into our actuals just based on when people move into the homes and move in. Uh, since July of two thousand twenty-four onward, we'll now see those rate increases. But of course, there's a big mix of those who are in the two thousand twenty-four rates, even some far as back as two thousand and two. So we have a, a wide range that way. Salaries and benefits, of course, uh, like many departments across the county, is our largest expenditure at eighty-four percent. We did complete a uh, uh, labor negotiations between Lee Manor Opsu and Gray Gable Opsu. And we have our owner agreement going to arbitration uh for next, for next year. And we will be uh working through our uniform, uniform with Rockwood Terrace uh in two thousand twenty-five. Additionally, across, like I've, like mentioned, across the rest of the county, we do see a non-union salary review, which happened last year with the five-step grid. In two thousand twenty-five, we see that all those who are at the, at the top from the previous grid, moving up one more step. Two thousand twenty-six is uh quite a bit of a lesser step as we, we have a lot of senior staff on our non-union who then wouldn't have a step up uh going forward from that. And of course, the largest one, that was the largest impact in this one, we want to provide a bit more context and explanation, is around the long-term care staffing increase or our direct, uh, direct care. As you would remember from last year, in two thousand twenty-four, we were provided a range to say that your direct care funding will range from. One thousand three hundred and four dollars per bed per month to one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. They did not provide us any context as to saying where we would end up on the grid, because again, they said it depends on how many uh long-term care homes there are, how many beds are coming online. All those sort of variables. So out of abundance of precaution from last year, we budgeted at the one thousand three hundred and four dollars, which resulted in, in our larger uh levy increase. Uh, in the previous year. What we then received this year. What we then received this year in twenty twenty uh, twenty twenty four as an actual, we received, so the range was one thousand three hundred and four to one thousand seven hundred and fifty three. But we received one thousand eight hundred and twenty two above the range that was even provided. Again, we've uh now taken into account and are applying those funds, but they've provided us a new range for the next year of twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. Through their, to the provincial fiscal year, and that range is one thousand six hundred and seventy three dollars and fifty five cents to one thousand seven hundred and twenty one dollars and forty nine cents. Based on how our performance and where we've been sitting at, being at the top tier on uh many of our funding allotments, we've budgeted one thousand seven hundred and twenty one dollars and forty nine cents. Having funds, funds in uh, in reserves that if we were to come in at a lower amount, we would be able to cover, cover that shortfall. But then being able to not uh have to rely on a, on a levy levy increase with that. That is the overall uh summary of our budget for, for that's across all the homes. I'm here to answer, though, any questions you might have of anything in specifics, or if there's anything in specific with any of our homes.
Okay, thank you. We'll just get the uh, the participants back on the screen at this point and looking around the chamber. Not seeing any hands. And looking on the screen, not seeing any hands. Okay. Oh, no, I think that's, that's the cursor. Yeah. He's doing jazz hands. Okay, um, so I don't see any questions for you. Um, thank you very much for that portion. And are you going to continue to speak through the other pages or is this the conclusion of your section?
This was the planned conclusion at our, at our section, but happy to answer anything that might come up or have any further ones.
Okay, so I still don't see any further hands, so I think we're good. Thank you very much for all that information. Nicely done, five minutes before lunch. Yeah. Okay. Now, uh, Director Spicer, you're next up to discuss redevelopment with five minutes. Do you want to uh? There you go. Going to show, show us how it's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I don't know that I've ever helped been the holdup between lunch. Maybe on a budget day. Uh, so the draft budget for redevelopment recommends a six hundred thousand dollar levy increase. This is required to assist in funding the cost of the construction loan interest that will be paid to Infrastructure Ontario beginning. In twenty twenty five. So construction fund subsidy of ten million three hundred and sixty eight thousand was received in August this year. Based on cash flow estimates, we're estimating we're going to use just over one million of that in twenty twenty four. In addition to the seven million dollars we had in reserves that were set aside for the project. That'll leave about nine point three million in construction subsidy for use in twenty twenty five. And then when we reach that point, we'll be accessing the construction loan from Infrastructure Ontario. And as a reminder, when construction loan is in play, we only pay interest. And then when we convert it to a debenture, that's when we begin making principal repayments as well. So the budget contains a number of assumptions. Uh, the timing of expenditures based on cost estimates provided by Colliers, project leaders. Contractors, consultants, and of course, interest rates. We have assumed a construction loan interest rate of four percent for twenty twenty five. Thursday's rate remained at four point four four percent. Uh, with Infrastructure Ontario, and that was unchanged from November twenty second. Um, I assume it will go down in the next few days. Based on the Bank Canada fifty point basis reduction on Wednesday. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, I'll look around the chamber first. Not seen any questions there, and if we can just go to the virtual participants. Also no hands. No, I believe we do not have any questions for you. Thank you. Okay, so that allows us, we are now at one minute to one. That's great. I do believe then we should. Pick up on uh paramedic services after lunch, Madam Clerk. Okay, and Madam Clerk, we'll break for lunch until. Okay, so if perhaps we could have everybody back at uh one forty five so we can carry on. Everybody's in their seats at one forty five, ready to go. Then we will continue with, we'll be doing page one thirty three, paramedic services directly after the break and, and then we'll move into capital. That will end our human services and allow us to move on to transportation. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, welcome back County Council and welcome to those who are online and those who are here in the chamber. We are ready to continue on with the page by page analysis. And update from staff members. So with this, we are going to bring up, I'm going to call up Director McNabb to begin with the paramedic services beginning on page one hundred and thirty three. Welcome, thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Microsofts. Uh, first off, like to say thank you to uh Kim and Mary Lou and Garrett for preparing this budget along with me. Uh, so paramedic services, uh, the budget includes the net department requirement. Total operating capital of nine million nine hundred and thirty four thousand six hundred. Compared to nine million and thirty thousand twenty twenty four, which is an increase of nine hundred and four thousand six hundred. For approximately a ten point zero two percent increase. Twenty twenty five operating budget reflects a nine hundred and three thousand three hundred dollar increase as compared to uh twenty twenty four. The Ministry of Health provides current year funding based upon a fifty percent of the previous year's operating budget. Adjusted for public sector accounting board eligible expenditures. Uh, but there is no inflationary increase. Uh, that mid-year increase uh stopped in uh two thousand nineteen. The twenty twenty five budget grant amount of ten million five hundred and twelve thousand has been calculated, calculated using that that same assumption. Will, will, will the assumption that that model won't change for funding in this upcoming year. The grant excludes uh provincial funding for Ontario Health West and Ministry of Long Term Care. Which funds our uh community paramedic program and our supportive outreach program. As well, it doesn't include the funding for the designated offload uh nurse program. Which is more or less a flow through uh from paramedic services to the hospital to fund the offload nurse. Excluding the community paramedicine program, wages paid to transportation services performing our repairs on vehicles. And the service review enhancement salaries and benefits have increased six hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars as compared to the twenty twenty four budget. As far as reasons for this, uh, our salaries and benefits uh represent eighty point seven percent of those operating expenditure expenditures. And the increases are cost of living adjustments, effective agreement increases. Increased benefit rates and increased number of lost time hours for backfill. For uniforms, the budget shows an increase of fifty five thousand six hundred. Uh, this is primarily due to us purchasing new jackets in twenty twenty five. Uh, those jackets are on a five year replacement cycle. Uh, this year, uh, we will be implementing new uh software for electronic medical record for nine one one. And uh, and community paramedicine with budget approval. Uh, this movement will save us approximately forty nine thousand six hundred dollars. It'll also lead to significant savings in hardware costs. Uh, for medical supplies, uh, we've seen a significant increase in medical supplies uh and patient care equipment since the beginning of COVID. And we've tried to uh. Match the uh twenty twenty four actual to what the uh, uh, twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty, twenty, we try to match the twenty twenty four actual to what twenty twenty five is going to be. Uh, we've increased the budget by twenty six thousand. We have uh recently just finished a medical and supplies tender. We hope we will see some savings through that bill this year. Uh, also, uh, we're outfitting two new ambulances. The twenty twenty five budget for patient care equipment was increased by fifty two thousand three hundred. And uh, thirty thousand of this relates to fitting the new ambulances with uh new equipment. Uh, where we do move uh between one vehicle to another, where we uh. Replace our fleet that when they get to six years, we move the majority of that equipment over. But when we add vehicles to the fleet, we pretty much have to start from scratch with putting this equipment in. As far as our comprehensive deployment review and uh enhancements. Uh, in twenty twenty two, we completed a comprehensive uh deployment review. Uh, that review saw us uh predicted a call increase of sixty eight percent over the next ten years, roughly five point eight percent per year. And uh, to match that need and demand. Uh, ORH, the consulting company that did the review, recommended a forty percent increase in resources over that time. Uh, last year during the budget process, uh, we reduced that plan slightly. Uh, but we uh continued on that uh in that plan to have six twelve hour shifts. Uh, seven days a week. And a weekend up staff as well as additional seven ambulances over the next ten years. Part of that plan, though, didn't include the, the plan of where we park all these vehicles, uh, when we add them to these bases. And uh, being able to park our spares in a place uh where they can protect it uh from heat and cold. So part of the plan uh that we incorporated. Instead of building on to places that may be difficult or not possible to build on to. We looked to try to further enhance our response times in rural areas. So we added uh bases in uh, in Aton, uh, Bieber Sham, Cobble Beach, and Thornberry. Uh, to, to the plan. So that helps us accomplish our parking issues, but it also helps us be able to spread out. Our response times to um our more rural areas. Um, so as far as the annual funding for this uh, for the comprehensive deployment review. Uh, it's estimated that it's four hundred and ten thousand dollars uh yearly for the next ten years. Uh, last year, we budgeted three hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred. But uh, this increases uh some changes in assumptions that we've uh, we've seen since the time of enhancement. Our commitment is to look at this plan uh as we move forward. Uh, when ORH did the plan, they recommended uh two hundred and fifty two hours of staffing, which is roughly three twelve hour cars in twenty twenty two. So this year in twenty twenty four, we added two. And then next year, we're adding the one. So uh, that gets us, you know, to a point where we've added three twelve hour cars. It's just some time to look and evaluate what the response times look like. In uh, in twenty four, twenty five, and twenty twenty six, there are no enhancements as far as staffing goes. There is a base in Aton if it gets approved. But uh, it'll give us that time for these uh first three twelve hour cars to see what type of difference it's made on our, our response time. With our modeling tool now, we can continue to put call volumes in. And uh, staffing and see what it looks like going forward. So we look forward to be able to do that. Um, so this year uh in twenty twenty five with budget approval, there is a twelve hour car going to Fever Sham, which will require a four full time paramedics. The enhancement also calls for scheduling uh assistance. This will give us the ability for seven day a week scheduling. Uh, where the supervisor will not have to be in the office filling shifts on a, on a busy day. They'll be able to be out on the road uh supporting their crews. As well, this is uh to continue on with our duty supervisor uh that was in the budget last year, but it'll continue on into uh twenty twenty five and going forward. Um, also in this is also the capital cost for a Fever Sham base. And also the completion of Durham base. Um, in twenty twenty five, these costs total one million two hundred and thirty six thousand six hundred uh with four hundred and ten thousand funded from levy. An increased grant resulting from the twenty twenty four enhancements and borrowing from reserves move the cost over eleven year period. So uh, working with finance as opposed to having huge fluctuations in our budget. Each year, we've come up with this consistent plan to have a consistent number uh yearly to move this forward as opposed to seeing. Large increases one year and then no one increases the next. For our community paramedic programs, um. Community paramedicine uh and community paramedic for long term care have been uh combined to one budget. Uh, we have funding uh from two different streams. Uh, one is from Material Health West and uh one from Ministry of Long Term Care. Um, so what we do is we uh, we, we use the funds from Material Health West now uh to fund our SOS program. And anything left over of that, we move over into the community paramedic long term care and to fund our home visit program. Uh, the twenty twenty five budget includes one million two hundred and seventy seven, two hundred and seventy thousand funding from the Ministry of Long Term Care. And ninety thousand two hundred from funding from Ontario Health West, totaling one million three hundred thousand two hundred for provincial grant. The total bundle budget expenditures for this program are one million five hundred and thirty two thousand six hundred. Leaving one hundred and seventy two thousand four hundred to fund in the Great County levy. What, what's more or less happened before SOS was funded through the Great County uh, uh cannabis relief and uh. Um, safe restart funds. Instead of that now, uh, those funds are being, it's actually being moved and, and part of it's funded from the SOS program is not funded. And it's all funded now from uh the uh OH funding. And uh, the uh, this community paramedic program is partial of that now is one hundred and seventy two thousand from um, the Great County levy. The community paramedic program has three community paramedics working seven days a week. Uh, and they support roughly uh five hundred and fifty patients in the home visit program. And about seventy patients in our clinic. The supportive outreach program uh is a program that works in the community as a nurse practitioner, uh, community paramedic. To mental health counselors and a social navigator. That program costs six hundred and seventy four thousand seven hundred. And operates four days a week. It works with uh members of our community that are homeless or precariously housed. That have uh mental health and addictions. Uh, roughly at any given time, uh, a hundred, they support about a hundred patients and maybe a hundred clients. Um, for our peer support program, um, Great County is included in uh. Um, the, the uh, Great County paramedics are, are included in the Supporting Ontario First Act. This is where uh, their, the county is required to have programs in place to support first responders. That uh, that potentially could suffer from PTSD. Um, we want to have programs in place to support them uh to prevent PTSD, or if they develop PTSD, to support them in their journey. The twenty twenty five budget builds on the program that we established in twenty eighteen. And includes a, a training for staff, a family day event, a staff time. For a peer support, peer support training. It is a, we also have oversight from a clinical psychologist of our peer support team and the care that they offer. And also in uh, this year, there's uh enhanced training for our peer support team to move their training ahead. Uh, the public access defibrillation program, uh, the proposed budget is twenty five thousand five hundred. Which is an increase of twenty nine hundred dollars. Uh, this is due to increase in cost of supplies. Uh, we have a hundred and ninety six public access D C. Uh, D C B S in the county. We, we went to this program probably three or four years ago to have better. Uh, assurance that the, the machines are ready to operate if they're needed. So we uh have a way of tracking those machines uh as far as batteries and pad replacement uh to ensure that they're ready to operate if they're needed. The dedicated offload nursing program. Uh, includes a payment to break shores of fifty four thousand six hundred. Um, again, this is just a flow through. Uh, it's something that's new to the county in the last couple of years. Uh, this allows paramedics, when they come into the hospital, to have the patients offloaded into a waiting stretcher and have a nurse. To care for that patient to get the ambulances back on the road. As far as uh transfers to reserve, the twenty twenty five operating budget includes annual transfer reserve. Of one million two hundred and seventy two thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, five hundred and thirty eight thousand five hundred is to fund new capital purchases uh required for enhancements. That'd be mostly around vehicles and equipment. Uh, seven hundred thirteen, seven hundred seventeen thousand three hundred to fund. The replacement of existing capital assets. Again, most likely a lot of its vehicles. Uh, fourteen thousand for the replacement of paramedic jackets, which we plan for to replace every five years. And thirty one hundred dollars for helmets and bags that have a fifteen year lifespan. Vehicle operations budget has a levy requirement of one million eight thousand eight hundred dollars. This is an increase of fifty two thousand seven hundred. And reflects uh eighty six thousand five hundred for fleet repairs. We're, we're seeing an increase in number of repairs right now because uh the ability for us to get vehicles in a timely manner has been impacted due to COVID. Uh, I believe right now we have uh. We just received our second ambulance of the eleven ordered. But um, but uh, we hope to be able to have a majority of these units come to us in the next year. But um but uh we hope to be able to have a majority of these units come to us in the next year. So uh what we did is offset some of this uh by a transfer of reserve of fifty thousand dollars. Because we really hope that some of these uh maintenance costs will reduce once our fleet gets newer. Also in the budget, there's eighty four hundred dollars for vehicle insurance, uh two thousand dollars uh for tires. And there's money here just to improve the configuration of the backseat of one of our response vehicles for carrying of equipment. And uh you want to wait for the capital budget?
Yes, why don't we take any questions from that first portion and then we'll we'll move on to capital. So. I'll look around the room first and I'll go to Counselor Echols.
As we continue, as param- paramedics continue to deliver door-to-door. Health service, whether it's through SOS. Uh, and a number of the other programs that we have out there. And not having that funded certainly by. Uh, the ministry. As we're taking a lot of these health concerns. Uh, that are, I believe, are being downloaded to us. And the other factor of having uh at least. One, two of the hospitals that we deal with, their emergency closures, emergency room closures. On a semi-regular basis. Uh, unscheduled semi-regular basis apparently. And the effects that that's having. And the supply, as I said before, of the door-to-door medical assistance. Predominantly health. What's our opera, what's our chances of starting to bill OHIP for these coverages? And starting to generate the revenue. That we're expanding here of the property tax being downloaded uh from the health. Is there any opportunity? There's a great opportunity to do it. Is there any chance of us doing it? Adam CEO seems to be giggling. We've been downloaded considerably here and the province continues, as I said in a number of these things. Of moving us down, down in healthcare. And if the Ministry of Health wants to continue to do this. That they don't want to be the responsible one and put it down to the municipal property tax. Then I think we should be sending a bill to the Ministry of Health or OHIP. For these services that we continue to supply and enhance the supply. Does somebody want to say? Make a comment on that or not?
Yeah, um, through you, Sir Warden, thank you for the question. Um, I think. The the situation, as you describe, a counselor Echols is one that's shared. Across all of the municipalities in Ontario, as as you know. I think that. You know, our our efforts in advocacy, both through Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and AMO and Roma. Are the avenues that are available to us. I will say that, you know. At the boots-on-the-ground level. Kevin and his team have been able to have. Um, very useful conversations with um. The local representatives of the ministry. And they have provided support to us. On on occasions with new initiatives that's been very much appreciated. But it it you're you're not wrong that compared to where we were five or ten years ago. As far as the, you know, the difference between providing pure nine-one-one service and where we are now is a very significant difference.
Okay, thank you for that response. I'm gonna go to Counselor Kentner next.
Thank you, Warden Matrasas, and through you a question. I just uh wonder if you could tell us something about the. Recovery from the ambulances that we uh are finished with uh. Um, that that we replace. Who who actually purchases these ambulances from us?
Um, to start with, uh, if we've in the past, we've offered them out to Bright Shores Health System. Uh, for their transfer uh program. I'm not sure when the units we have now will that are ready to go to uh to be decommissioned and sold. On the private market, if they will take those, they're they're significantly high on kilometers. But uh if if they don't go there, then they would end up going on our uh government deals and people will bid for them on there.
Okay, thank you. Was there a follow-up, Counselor Cantner?
Uh, I, yes, I was just, uh, I did have a follow-up on that. So so we take the uh, the uh. The specialized uh treatments that we've given each one out and put it in a new unit. Is that the idea?
Yes, wherever we can take and move the equipment over to the next unit, uh, that's that is moved over. In the past with uh Bright Shores, uh, we have. Sold them with our power load and power stretcher because it really goes with the use of that unit. And if it's because we use stretchers for ten years. And we use power loads for two cycles of six, so a total of twelve years. If they were needing a twelve, a power load in that unit. Uh, the uh they would pay the difference between like fifty percent more or less of that next six years we'd have to do to buy a new one. That that's what's happened in the past.
Okay, I see. A thank you from Counselor Kentner. I don't see any further hands online, looking around the room. No further questions. I think we're ready to move on to the capital portion. Thank you.
The twenty twenty five capital budget has a levy impact totaling one hundred and ninety eight thousand six hundred dollars. An increase of thirteen hundred dollars from twenty twenty four. The budget includes the completion of the construction of the new Durham base. And uh if anybody stroll through Durham lately, you'll see that the foundation laws are up and they are backfilling it now. And uh the plan is to have that base uh uh available uh as in mid-June of uh twenty twenty five. It also includes the land acquisition and and design of the construction of the new Fever Sham base. The debenture for the Durham base will begin in twenty twenty five and a portion of that repayment will be offset by development charges. The Fever Sham debenture uh is expected to begin in twenty twenty six. Vehicle and equipment purchases are funded through the equipment reserve. The capital purchases for twenty twenty five for the existing fleet are as follows. Uh, eight ambulances, uh, four from the twenty twenty four budget, which have been moved ahead. And four from the twenty twenty five budget replacement cycle. Currently, we have a fleet of seventeen ambulances on a six-year replacement cycle. All these ambulances normally go around three hundred thousand kilometers, but there'd be a lot of these that are up over four hundred thousand or close to four hundred thousand right now. And that's really used because of this supply uh demand and us not being able to get them. Also includes the purchase of three power load stretchers. And uh forty-four iPads and twenty-two iPad mounts. We're moving to a new catalog program that's uh supplied by the Ministry of Health. Uh, this is actually a free program that we don't have to pay for, which is a benefit. And it also is using significantly less costing hardware. We're moving to iPads away from expensive uh anisonic tablet computers. As well going away from docks that uh generally break and are very expensive to repair. And also the new platform that we will be going to with approval uh moves to those iPads as well. Again, hopefully reducing or repairing capital costs around that. As far as the service enhancement, uh, it includes uh two ambulances. Uh, one that we've ordered already and one that will go order early in twenty twenty five. Another power stretcher, two iPads, two uh cardiac monitors. Uh, two ABL, uh, two track stair chairs and two mechanical CPR devices. Again, normally this equipment would be moved from one ambulance to the other, but because these are additions to the fleet because of additional cars. Uh, we have to outfit those vehicles. Uh, this is back to Counselor Kentner's question. A transfer some reserve or offset from proceeds from the disposition. And this will include the sale of uh eight ambulances as well as we'll be selling uh three power stretchers. The twenty twenty five capital budget includes annual transfers to reserve of one hundred and fifty seven thousand nine hundred for the following. Uh, thirty-three thousand five hundred to building repairs and maintenance. And one hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred to fund existing. Or sorry, funding replacement of existing capital assets uh for that have completed their lifecycle. There are a couple of building improvements in twenty twenty five. Uh, the first is the roof at the Owensound base. It's due for replacement uh under the BCA in twenty thirty-three. But a consultant had said that if we were to invest this money this year. That we would get another thirty-five years out of the roof. So ultimately we'll get another twenty-seven years on top of this. So the plan is to do that work to extend the life of that. And uh it's just time at the Owensound base, it's twenty years now to replace the the VCT file. And the base is uh discoloring and it's tough to keep wax now. I'll see we'll be replacing that. Capital.
Okay, thank you. So I'll put it out for any council questions. Not seeing any here in the room. Do not see any hands going up on the screen. So I think that concludes your portion. Thank you very much, Director McNab. All right, so with that, then we have one more major portion to look through. Um, before we wrap things up at the very end, so we'll call up Director Hoy. To do an introduction and we're going to begin with transportation. Oh, sorry, um, I see Director Spicer coming up. Sorry, you're gonna do. And you're gonna walk us through the next portion.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'm just doing the intro. And so for this portion of the budget for transportation services, we're now on to page two hundred and forty of your package. So the twenty twenty five Transportation Services departmental budgets include a net departmental requirement operating in capital combined. Of twenty-four million nine hundred seventy-three thousand dollars compared to twenty-three million nine hundred nineteen thousand six hundred dollars in twenty twenty-four. Which is an increase of one million fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars. And as mentioned previously, the twenty twenty five budget and the twenty twenty-six projection does not reflect any increase in the levy or adjustments to the county road network. Uh, from the work that was done at the urban and road exchange task force recommendations. Uh, based on community of the whole meeting on October tenth, and now I'll turn it over to Pat.
All right, I was just gonna go quickly over uh the supervision overhead uh budget. So on page two forty-one and then uh our other staff is gonna do the other areas. Um, and just to kind of, um, it was mentioned in some other departments. So moving to day force. Uh, you'll find our budget, if you're kind of looking for that number that took a a bit of a jump or a drop. Um, it's pretty hard to decipher because there's a lot of big wild swings and that uh with our city works, a lot of um. A person's time would be split between multiple budgets. Now everyone's kind of in one budget, so. Uh, that results in supervision overhead administrative budget specifically of a decrease of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, just because people got. You know, there was part of a person's time and the other is not there now. Um, but the notable changes on the budget, I'm on page two forty-one just of the uh of the package, and then we'll go back to the other page when Sean comes up. Uh, the notable budget changes would be the increase in professional fees for software. Uh, so that is about our asset optimizer software. So. Um, basically, uh, you're getting to the point where you have a full lifecycle uh for every asset you have, so. Um, maybe if we're following ex-Warden McKinley's wish of a fifty-year bridge and road plan. Uh, that is ultimately what that software will end up doing, so. Um, but again, it takes uh an expert in the program. Uh, we've kind of been plugging away at it, but it takes a lot of maybe uh delegated time, so. Uh, with the help of IT, we're putting some money in the budget this year to to kind of get that um thing filled and and start building out. Um, a more prescriptive plan on what we want to do with all our assets, just to give more information for. Um, for council where it'd be easier to do a scenario that. If the budget was increased by a million dollars, this is what it would result in your payment condition indexes and things like that. And the other, the other uh item added this year is to performing a regional transportation assessment, uh, funding from development charges, but of course it's still, um, you know, it's still not cheap and. Um, as we've said many times, you think, well, why are you studying a regional transportation when, um, you know, it really is. You know, the majority of the traffic is on the MTO roads. Uh, but it's kind of coming from a long history of what we've done. I look at. All the advocating we did for the Al Van Lee roundabout back in the day. Probably if we hadn't had such a prominent role in uh going to the province and even paying for some of the design, maybe that job wouldn't have fit in their queue, so. Uh, that kind of where is where that job is coming from. So that's kind of um. My summary of the supervision overhead and administrative budget. And if there's no questions, or we could bring uh John up, talk about the operations budget.
Okay, so I'll just ask then if there are any questions for that introduction from Director Hoy. He'll probably want to hear the rest of your department report and then we'll look for questions. So, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Pat. Uh, through the warden, um, I'm going through transportation services. Ordinary maintenance, uh, winter maintenance, facilities, depots and domes and the machinery and equipment budgets. So starting on page two forty of your budget details documents. Um, ordinary maintenance. That captures all road maintenance outside of winter maintenance, including activities like shoulder gravelling. Uh, grading, pothole patching, signs, ditching, brushing, culvert replacements. Uh, traffic signals and so on. Um, the ordinary maintenance budget totals four million forty-four thousand six hundred, representing an increase of two hundred and eighty-six thousand compared to two twenty twenty-four. However, as Pat noted. Um, that number is deceiving because approximately a hundred and eighty thousand of that um is driven by the new way of tracking salaries. Uh, due to day force implementation. So with the remaining a hundred and six-ish thousand of that. Is largely largely driven by increasing preventative maintenance of traffic signals. And inflationary pressure for materials as well as contract services such as. Catchphrase and cleaning, uh, pavement marking, crack filling, culvert mining and so on. Moving on to winter maintenance. Uh, this captures all winter road maintenance activities such as plowing and spreading. Um, ordinary maintenance activities completed during the winter season. Such as pothole and sign repair and supervisory activities such as patrolling and equipment maintenance. Winter maintenance budget totals five million six hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred. Representing an increase of one hundred eleven thousand eight hundred compared to twenty twenty-four. And this is driven by increasing costs for winter control agreements. Such as those between the county and the city of Owensound, the town of West Gray and the counties of Bruce, Simcoe and Duffer. Uh, moving on to facilities, depots and domes on page two forty-one of the details document. The facilities, depots and domes operating in capital budget totals six hundred thirty-eight thousand, representing a decrease of twenty-three thousand. Compared to twenty twenty-four. Uh, notable projects scheduled for twenty twenty-five include the removal of asbestos insulation from Chatsworth Depot. Upgrades from the building condition assessments such as LED lighting. Uh, gas line replacements and septic upgrades. Um, replacing the Clarksburg roll-up doors. Phase one of the new Patrol D depot build. And installation of uh EV chargers in Clarksburg, Aton and Chatsworth for fourteen total. Moving on to machinery and equipment, page two forty-two. Two million nine hundred five thousand seven hundred has been budgeted for equipment purchases based on the ten-year capital replacement schedule. Of that, eight hundred twenty-four thousand is carried over from the twenty twenty-three tandem purchases, which represent the twenty twenty-four replacements. And four hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred from the twenty twenty-four tandem purchases, representing the twenty twenty-five replacements. And notable equipment purchases include. Um, tandem trucker snowplow replacements. Phasing in EV purchases by getting two electric half tons in addition to two gas. And to provide some context, uh, currently within the uh operations or transportation. Um, fleet, we have twenty-one half tons. Um, four, three-quarter ton and uh five one-ton pickups. So two of roughly thirty of our pickups will be electrified. Um, Clarksburg payloader replacement. Replacing one large grader. Uh, adding one new skid steer. Upgrading our ABL or automated vehicle locator system or vehicle GPS system. And purchasing some new mowers and road closed trailers. So that covers Transportation Services uh twenty twenty-five. Ordinary maintenance, winter maintenance, facilities and equipment budgets. And if it suits the warden, I'll be happy to take some questions right now before turning things over to Chuck.
Okay, so that, so you were. Okay, so that so you were referring to some items that are on two forty-three, but we'll go back to page two forty-two with Mr. Irtan afterwards in with regards to the major road and bridge construction budget. So what's been presented here? Uh what's been presented by Mr. Anthony? I'll just look for any questions from council members. Not seeing any here in the chamber and not seeing any on the screen. Okay, so I think we're ready to proceed with Mr. Irtan. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good afternoon. Uh so the major road and bridge capital construction uh budget, the twenty twenty-five resurfacing and budget totals increased or sorry, is tenth million nine hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars reflecting an increase of seven hundred four thousand nine hundred compared to twenty twenty-four. So of this increase, three hundred and fifty thousand is attributed to the employee salaries that have been relocated from the supervision and overhead budget. And that's again due to the transition to day force. So this budget includes a three million dollar transfer to reserves uh with two-point-five million earmarked for capital structure replacements and five hundred thousand for road capital projects. Notably, the allocation to the capital structure replacement reserve is projected to rise by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually within the tenure plan to address an impending wave of bridge replacements. Many structures built within between the nineteen fifties and nineteen seventies are approaching the end of their service life. So by continuing to invest in this reserve, the county aims to proactively address structural replacements and mitigate the risk of future bridge closures. Uh these reserve transfers align with the twenty twenty-three Asset Management Plan adopted by council. Uh the plan recommended a two-point-five-five percent annual taxation increase over fifteen years, starting in twenty twenty-five, to eliminate the annual infrastructure deficit. Uh additionally, the budget includes or benefits from a one hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred dollar increase in funding through the uh Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, or as better known as OSEF. Uh this represents a five-point-four percent increase compared to twenty twenty-four. And each year, the provincial government have used the OSEF allocations, uh which can fluctuate up to fifteen percent, kind of plus or minus uh depending on or compared to prior years. Uh so the next, I'd like to go over the key projects and they're on two fifty-five, I believe. You want to go there for the twenty twenty-five projects? Yeah, I'll talk about a few of these, uh maybe not every single one, just depending on their scope, so it'll scope for kind of the larger uh scale jobs. Uh the largest project we have for twenty twenty-five is the pulverization and paving of Gray Road twelve uh from Gray Road forty to Gray Road one-twelve southwest of Meaford. Uh this project is eleven kilometers in length and will include paved shoulders, and the work is budgeted at seven-point-four million dollars. And we're currently scheduling a tender lease in uh early January. Uh we'll also be returning to Graywood nine next year to do both the pulverize and pave and then overlay project. Uh this project will address the last remaining road sections to be uh constructed with between Highway six and Dundalk. Uh and it'll also provide continuous paved shoulders from Graywood one oh nine to Dundalk. Uh and that project is projected to cost three-point-eight-four million. We also have a pulverize and pave construction project on Graywood fourteen, uh which is budgeted at two-point-nine million dollars. Uh this project begins eight hundred meters south of South Gate Road fourteen and extends to the intersection of South Gate Road eight, uh which is where it turned, uh Graywood fourteen turns west towards Cedarville. Uh the project includes paved shoulders and will include some repair to the bridge railings at the bridge south of South Gate Road ten. Uh we're currently in the final stages of hopefully retaining some property acquisition for the Gray Road thirty pulverizing pave project uh within the Beaver Valley. The project is budgeted at two-point-three million dollars and includes fifteen culvert replacements uh in the addition of a narrow paved shoulder. Uh the narrow paved shoulder is due to the fact uh that Gray Road thirty lies within the conservation regulated area. Uh and through discussions with the Conservation Authority, uh we've been unable to widen the road platform in that area, so effectively the paved shoulders that we're putting in is uh the most we can get. Finally, uh pending the property or progress of the property negotiations, there is a chance that the we may proceed with just the culvert replacements in twenty twenty-five uh and leave the roadwork portion to a date when we can get the property acquisition finalized and complete the pulverize and pave of the road. Gray Road twenty-eight from Tenth Street to Fourteenth Street in Hanover will also be constructed in twenty twenty-five and will include the replacement of the traffic signals at the intersection of Gray Roads four and twenty-eight. Uh this is, this project's being completed with uh in partnership with the staff at the town of Hanover and is budgeted at two-point-one-six million from the county side of the project. Uh property acquisition and the Hydra One relocation have progressed smoothly, so we're uh in a place now that the project can proceed. Staff have also allocated three-point-six million to two overlay projects on Graywoods twenty-five and one nineteen uh as pavement preservation projects. Uh and this is to add a second lift of asphalt and provide better structural support to the asphalt, uh extending the useful life. We do have two bridge projects scheduled for twenty twenty-five, the first being on the phrase of Saint Vincent Town Line, uh which is between Greyhounds and Meaford, just east or sorry, just west of uh town of Blue Mountains. Property acquisition still remains a factor for this project, uh and we remain in negotiation with the property owner, uh but there are some issues where we're attempting, or the property owner would like to uh include some road repairs to the road to the east of the project. Uh again, that's, the road is not in our jurisdiction, so we don't really have the ability to address those, but we have been in concert uh discussions with the municipalities about this, uh and we're hoping to facilitate the agreement. Uh the other bridge is the Glenelg Road twenty-three bridge replacement, and it's being completed uh as a partnership program, partnership project with West Gray. Uh and West Gray is planning to reconstruct the road to the north of the structure. In recent discussions, we have found that they aren't fund, they have no funding in the budget, or their twenty-five budget for this project. Uh so how that impacts our project, we're still working through that um. Ultimately, the projects together help create a big uh large overall savings just from the fact our structure needs a lot of fill, we're taking a lot of fill of a hill to the north, so uh mutually, they do benefit one another to have them done at the same time. And both of these bridge projects are being funded out of the Structure and Culvert Rehabilitation Reserve uh that I mentioned earlier. And finally, there are two projects that were moved from the twenty twenty-five forecast from the previous tenure capital. Uh the first is the Gray Road five reconstruction uh from First Street Southwest to Third Street A West in Owen Sound. This was reassigned to twenty twenty-eight to allow staff to begin a consultant assignment uh that would investigate the slope at the Harrison Park entrance. Uh the investigation would look at the stability of the slope and determine what impact construction may have and determine whether retaining wall structure is necessary, and if so, uh what size and type of structure would be required. Uh and staff actually recently met with uh faculty from Western University to discuss this. Uh and we're hoping to utilize their expertise, uh whether that's through a graduate program to uh study the slope and determine the best course of action going forward. Uh the other delay project is Structure fifteen nine oh two, which is located on Gray Road fifteen in Owen Sound, just uh near the Thirty-Second Street East intersection on the east side of town. Uh this project was related directly to a development application that is um stalled recently, so um we're basically just adjusting the timeframes for the project to uh better suit the development. So this is the majority of the projects of the plan. There are a few others, so uh are there any questions about the capital program? I can take those now.
Okay, so first, if there are any questions for Mr. Irtan, and then we'll do a concluding questions for any of the transportation staff members. I'm looking to the screen, not seeing hands. I'm looking here. I'll go to Counselor Greg.
Thank you. Just a quick question. The one project regarding Sixth Street East and Ninth Avenue East in Owen Sound, could you just expand on what that work is, acknowledging that the city's looking to reconstruct Ninth Avenue East from the southern southerly limits to Eighth Street um in twenty twenty-six, so just wondering what the coordination looks like.
Uh through you, Madam Morton. So the this project uh was brought to us from the city of Owen Sound. Uh and part of the application for the connecting link funding included uh some potential upgrades to uh the signalization, the lane configurations, um different configurations for the intersection. Uh and because we're responsible for the traffic signals at that location, that's uh what through conversations with city staff, that's the amount that they felt would be representative of the work that we would effectively be responsible for.
Okay. See no hands here in the hall or online. I think that concludes. Thank you very much, Mr. Irtan, and uh oh, I do see a hand up. Let's just make sure I can direct it to the appropriate staff. So, Counselor Nielsen?
Thank you, Warden. My name's back to the kind of a general transportation question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um so during the Budget and Finance Committee, we did discuss the um purchase of the half-ton trucks uh listed in the budget. There's two half-ton gas trucks and two half-ton electric trucks. Um part of the conversation was requesting staff, I think if I remember the conversation correctly, to just was there any information, the extra that could garner around the value in getting the the two and trucks? Uh there was also kind of a question, whether that one, an electric and a three gas. One point for bringing up the question is to just let the rest of county council know that was part of the discussion, because did staff do any extra uh background work on value difference between the electric and the gas half tons?
Okay, so we heard most of what you said. Your your audio went a little bit out, so let's try to attempt the answer for you, and then you can follow up if we've missed something. Uh Mr. Anthony?
Um in terms of, I think at that time, we mentioned that we expect to find some there's a a cost, initial cost difference between a a conventional and internal combustion and the an EV vehicle. Um that the differences come down as you'd expect in recent years. Um I'm expecting the difference uh when we actually start shopping around next year to be approximately between fifteen and twenty thousand in terms of initial purchase price, that being EV being um that much more. Uh we do expect to find the savings in the preventative maintenance of the vehicles where we're not doing um the oil changes and other things like that. Um speaking to our counterparts at um at at Dufferin County, um they're putting their vehicles on an eight-year replacement cycle. Um ours are on a seven-year replacement cycle right now. Um and they're not expecting, based on the usage, that they would have to um replace a battery, which would significantly increase. So that's something that we've taken into consideration, that we would essentially offload the vehicles before we got into a situation where we would have to replace a battery. Um beyond that, um I personally haven't done that level of deep, like that's pretty much the level of detail that I've looked into in terms of um um lifecycle costs for the vehicles, EV versus uh gas, but I'd be happy to do more if that um is something that council wanted us to do.
Okay, so Counselor Nielsen, was that everything?
Thank you very much, Warden. Yes, that does answer my questions.
Excellent, thank you. And I don't see any further hands here or on the screen, so that concludes our transportation uh examination. And with that, then I'd like to invite Director Spicer. Did you want to come up and speak to reserves now?
Thank you, Madam Morton. Um unless there's any specific questions on the reserves, I was prepared to leave it at the PowerPoint presentation that we did at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so I'll put it out to council members if they have any questions based on what we saw this morning and what's in the book. Seen any hands here? Not seen any hands on the screen. So I think we have the information we need. Thank you. Okay, so with that, then, that concludes the introduction or the the uh walkthrough pages by pages. So at this point in time, we'll need to put it out now to see if there are motions that council members, oh, oh, we're gonna do the closed session first. Okay, so I've just been advised that it's best for us to go into the closed session matters first, and then we'll come back out and we'll entertain what we would like, what council's wishes would be from that point forward. So with this, then, I'm go, i- it's recommended that the committee the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended to discuss staffing within the twenty twenty-five draft budget uh with regards to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. May I have a mover, please? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Eckert and seconded by Counselor Keveney. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, so we'll give everybody a moment to session, and we did oh, thank you. Just uh to follow up, we've now come back out of closed session, and I can report that we only discussed the matters, personal matters about identifiable individuals, including municipal or local board employees, and gave direction to staff. Okay, so with that now, uh it is now the opportunity for, after having heard all of the presentations from staff, it is the opportunity for me to circle back as uh had been indicated earlier, if there are council members that would like to put forth any motions about any adjustments to be added to what was presented today by staff. So here is the call for any motions. So we'll start with Counselor Greg.
Thank you. And through you, Warden, I'll skip the nine whereas clauses that I had written out here, uh because I've already mentioned it, but I'll move that the five thousand dollar item of funding towards the uh Forest Festival, the Forest Festival be removed from the twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay, so before we can enter into discussion, I'll need a seconder. Is there a seconder? It's seconded by Counselor Eccles, so it's now on the floor for discussion. Um Counselor Greg, did you want to lead into an introduction uh because you were the one that moved it? I do want to call on staff for some background on where uh the funds have come from for that festival. So did you want to begin? Go ahead.
Sure, and I'll be brief because I already touched upon some of it, but last year it was removed it from the budget as part of uh reducing the coyote and and bounty allotments from fifteen thousand to ten thousand, and the forest funding was removed in that same motion. Um I don't think that um the taxpayers should be funding some uh initiatives through various uh levels and and different partners in government. Uh this is one where uh the Conservation Authority is supportive of, and I'm comfortable uh leaving it within their domain. Um that's hence the reasoning for uh asking council to remove from the budget.
Okay, thank you. So before I go for any other council comments, I'll go to staff for an explanation on uh how that that festival is funded and our our contribution. Oh, okay, we're gonna go to Director Taylor.
Great, uh thanks, Warden, and and uh thank you for your questions, uh Counselor Greg. Um I've done some further research here on the funding for the Forest Festival, and I found their twenty twenty-three numbers, so twenty twenty-three was a year when the county was still funding. Uh but at that time, they had sponsorships from Hydro One at uh ten thousand plus. They had Bruce Power at five thousand, Gray County at five thousand. Each of Sogean Valley and Gray Sawble were both at twenty-five hundred, and uh Ontario Power Generation was also there. Uh they had some smaller sponsors, including the Bruce Gray Woodlots Association, uh the New Stat Lions Club and uh Soggy Nature, and then they had various volunteers. Um they do also state on their website that uh uh it's an annual three-day event uh that hosts over nine hundred grade uh seven students with over two hundred secondary students acting as volunteers. And and again, the nature of this this event is is to open students' eyes to uh different bo, different uh career paths in in forestry and hydro uh in in species management, sustainability in that regard. Uh so that's just a little bit of background on where they're currently funded from and and uh the festival itself, but certainly happy to take any more questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. And for clarification, do we know if it is currently in the budget for Bruce County? Because you mentioned they had also contributed the same?
Through you, Madam Morton. Uh I might have misspoke there. I meant Bruce Power.
Okay, sorry, maybe I misheard. So, okay, so Bruce Power but not Bruce County. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, sorry, maybe I misheard. So, okay, so Bruce Power, but not Bruce County. Okay, thank you very much. So with that, it's on the floor for any further discussion. We'll go to Councilor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden Mattressoff, and through you to County Council. I, I need to speak to this as a, as it is a tremendous opportunity to reach people at a young age about environmental impact, the impact that they have on the, on the forests, on the, on the fauna, on the water, on, on species at risk. Yes, the Gray Sawtooth supports it, but since the act has changed and it is now category three, it is not municipal levy funded unless it is opted into. I don't know how Gray Sawtooth has their, their municipal partnerships contributing. But Gray County doesn't contribute to the Conservation Authority that I'm aware of. And from what I learned by attending and walking through this remarkable three-day event, where over in just last year, nine hundred and thirteen students, one hundred and sixty-six high school students facilitating the programs, one hundred and forty-eight adult volunteers, ten teachers, thirty activities. It is a tremendous educational opportunity. It introduces, as Mr. Taylor indicated, introduces students to possible career paths that we may ultimately benefit from in the natural heritage side of things, the environmental, the climate action. And I, I would like to see this remain in the budget. So that is my, my pitch. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I don't see any further hands online. I don't see hands here in the chamber, so it has been moved and seconded. We've had discussion. So I will now ask then all those in favor of the motion. Okay, sorry, I just, could you just please lower your hands? I was just advised I should just make sure that everybody understands what they're voting for. So, Madam Clerk, could you? We don't have the benefit of having on the screen. I think that would be very helpful. So, thank you. I'll call the vote once it's on the screen. Okay, so it is on the screen that the funding of five thousand dollars for the Forest Festival be removed from the 2025 budget. So we're voting for the removal of that five thousand dollars from the budget that, the way that it was presented today. So if everybody's read that and knows what they're voting on, then Madam Clerk will have to ask you to go back to the screen where we can see everyone voting. Okay, so based on that, then, I will now call the vote. All those in favor of the motion. Okay. Hey, and can I ask for all those opposed, please? Could I ask the members online to, to just hold your hand if you're in opposition? Sorry, the screens keep flipping on us. In opposition. And then in the room, please, in opposition? Okay, so that motion is carried. Eight in favor. Thank you. Okay, are there other motions that are, that other council members wish to present?
Just point of, point of order, Madam Chair, eight, eight in favor, I think.
Yeah, out of fifteen. Yeah, so there were fifteen votes, eight were in favor.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so with that, then, we will look for any other motions that any other council members wish to put forward. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands online. I'm not seeing any hands here. Director Spicer, do you need a few moments to circle back to what our decisions today mean? Okay, so would you like a break until four o'clock? Okay, so we'll take a break until four o'clock, and then we'll hear a summary from our finance staff. Thank you very much. Okay, we've had the word from Technology that we are clear to proceed. I'm going to ask all the council members to get seated again. Just before we go to Director Spicer for your summary, we are going to circle back to that last vote that we did, because the problem is, is upon replay and upon reviewing, some of the virtual hands went up and down, and then after the count went up. So, so we're going to have to, and it's, it's no, no criticism of those online. We're in an unprecedented mode here, where we're actually dealing with fewer in-person votes than we are with online votes. So it's almost easier to have us all online or all in the chamber. So, 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 so in this particular case, just given the fact that we need to actually take some time to count, and we can't see a hand go up after the count's been done, we're going to need to call the vote again. For members here in the chamber as well, the same rules, that we're going to ask for the hands to be raised until we've indicated that the votes have been counted. So we'll, everybody is voting in the same, in the same way. But we will have to revisit that because of the, the lack of clarity on when the hands went up and down. So with that, Madam Clerk, so we are voting on the, I'm going to ask, just to make sure that there are no questions. Madam Clerk, could you please show us that motion again, just so that we understand, because we are asking to circle back? And then when we call the vote, we're going to ask that the members who are online indicate with their virtual hand, because then there's no, no complication about a hand going down too soon before the vote is counted or going up too late. And, yes, and for those in the chamber, you'll, you can use your real hand, but it's going to have to stay up in the air until the clerk has confirmed that the votes have been counted. Okay, so the motion that we are voting on that has been moved and seconded is that moved by, by Councilor Greg and seconded by Councilor Eccles, is that is that the five thousand dollars for the Forest Festival be removed, be removed? That's what you're voting on. If you're voting in favor, you're voting for the removal. Okay, so as soon as we can get the full gallery on, Ken? Okay, there we go. Okay, so we're all present. Everybody who is there online, everybody who's here in the chamber. Okay, so the first I'm going to call then is all those in favor, please use your virtual hand if you are in favor. And if you're in the chamber, please hold up your hand until we can count the votes. Everybody keep your virtual hand up. Okay, everybody's put up their virtual hands, and I'm now looking around the chamber. Okay, and now I'm going to ask for, thank you, everybody can lower your hands, your virtual and your in-person hands here in the chamber. And just to be sure we're getting this right, I'm going to ask for all those opposed. Please use your virtual hand and use your hand in the chamber. Okay, so thank you. Everybody can lower their hands, and I can confirm that the clerk and I have both witnessed that there were nine in favor of the motion and seven opposed to the motion. So thank you very much. I appreciate your indulgence on the fact that we are operating in, probably, I don't recall, in the two years that we've been meeting together, having more people online than we have here in the chamber. So thank you very much for that. So with that, then, we continue in the summary that Director Spicer has prepared for us, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So I'll go back to, we started the day with the total to raise from taxation is seventy-eight million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. The decisions made today, there was an addition of one hundred and one thousand, three hundred, and there was a removal of five thousand dollars. Those two net to an addition of ninety-six thousand, three hundred dollars. So the revised total levy is seventy-eight million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. After you take into account the adjustments for the increase in assessment and the impact of changes to what we anticipate will be the multi-res tax ratio, that'll be done in conjunction with the city of One Sound. So as a reminder, we wouldn't move forward with it if One Sound does not, as it wouldn't accomplish a goal. And then there's a slight tax adjustment for the difference in ratios with One Sound of just under forty-two hundred dollars. That brings us to a levy increase of three point three three percent.
Okay, a levy of three point three three percent. And did anybody need a repetition of the numbers that were there? Okay, not seeing any requests for any repeated information. Okay, so then that concludes, Madam CIO, is there anything else that you wish us to cover? Okay, and Madam Clerk, is there anything else procedurally before we move on to adjournment, as we did not have any other business? Okay, Madam Clerk is just preparing a recommended motion to, to proceed with the bylaw. So if everybody can just hold on a moment, and then I'll ask Madam Clerk if you could please put that up on the screen so that we can all read it. Thank you. Okay, so it's recommended that the two thousand twenty-five proposed budget be adopted as amended by proposing a levy increase of three point three-three percent after growth, and that a bylaw be brought forward to adopt the estimates of revenues and expenditures for the twen- the year two thousand twenty-five, requiring a total to be raised from taxation in two thousand twenty-five of seventy-eight million, three hundred and sixty-two and eight hundred dollars. Okay. Um, may I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Boddy. And seconded by Counselor Dickert. Uh, any discussion? Not seen any hands here in the chamber, and I'm not seeing any hands online. Therefore, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the virtual hands. And uh, thank you. Uh, sorry, I didn't see, get a chance to look at all the chamber hands. Could I ask all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Yes, that's carried. Thank you. Okay, all right. We did not have any other business, so it would just be a motion to adjourn. It would be recommended that this committee, the whole, does now adjourn at four oh nine PM to meet again at the call of the chair. Moved by Counselor Eccles, seconded by Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you.